This Planning Commission meeting is called to order. This meeting has been properly noticed and posted in compliance with the open-meeting law. We're live on KCLV, Channel 2, and this meeting will be rebroadcast Saturday at 10:00 a.m., the following Monday at midnight, and Tuesday at 5:00 a.m. and 6:00 p.m. Would everybody please stand and join me in the Pledge of Allegiance?
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Madam Clerk, would you please call the roll?
Chair Flankis?
Here.
Vice Chair Moody?
Here.
Commissioner Goines?
Present.
Commissioner Truesdale?
Present.
Commissioner Quinn, excused. Commissioner Schlotman?
Present.
Commissioner Bonar?
Here.
Thank you.
Thank you. I call your attention to the information printed in your agenda concerning our actions and the appeal and review process, if appropriate. Please read this carefully, and if you have any questions, staff is available. Also, the second page of the agenda contains our rules of conduct. We appreciate your adhering to these rules so we can have a smooth meeting. Thank you very much on that. Going into item number four, all comments made under this item for specific items will be cross-referenced to those items. Are there any members of the public who wish to speak under this portion of the agenda? Seeing none, I'll move on to item number five, the minutes. Is there a motion to approve the minutes of the Planning Commission meeting of June 11, 2013, and the Planning Commission workshop of June 20, 2013? And for the record, I will be abstaining on the approval of the minutes from the Planning Commission workshop of June 20, 2013. I was involved in a jury trial and not present.
And I need to abstain on the final minutes for the Planning Commission from June 11, because I was not present.
Mr. Chairman, therefore, I'll move to approve the minutes from June 11, 2013, and also the Planning Commission workshop of June 20, 2013. Thank you, Commissioner. Please vote. Motion carries. The minutes are approved. Going on to item number six, let's move on to our housekeeping items. Are there any items that commissioners, staff, applicants, or members of the public would like to pull forward for action? Commissioner Schlotman, you first.
Yes, Chairman. I would like to hold item number 47, SNC 49888, in abeyance for 30 days.
Thank you, Commissioner. Staff? Anybody?
I have one.
Oh, I'm sorry.
Chris Dingle, 10427 Gunpowder Falls. I'm here representing items 50 and 51. I want those to be obeyed for 30 days.
50 and 51?
Yes.
Thank you.
Mr. Chairman, the following?
Just one moment. Mr. Grunauer?
Mr. Chairman, Commissioners, Bob Grunauer, 8345 West Sunset Road. I am asking that items number 38 and 39 be held until your next Planning Commission meeting in August.
Thank you. One more, sorry.
Good evening. My name is Terry Murphy, representing the D Hotel, the Golden Gate Hotel, and Fremont Street Experience. I would like to ask that items 23 through 26, on the one-motion-one-vote agenda, be heard separately.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Now, staff, for the fourth time.
Mr. Chairman, the following items have been requested to be held in abeyance to the August 13, 2013 Planning Commission meeting. Items number 42 through number 46, MOD 49621, ZON 49622, VAR 49623, WVR 49624, and SDR 49625. Item number 52 and 53, VAR 49529, and MSP 4927, 49527, excuse me. Items number 56 and number 57, TMP 49542, and WVR 49873, as well as items number 59 through 61, SUP 48863, WVR 48864, and SDR 48862, as well as the following item has been requested to be withdrawn without prejudice, item number 29, WVR 48970. Thank you.
Thank you. Does anybody wish to be heard on any of these that are being pulled, or, excuse me, being obeyed?
Yes, thank you. My name is Joey Lynn, and it is-
I'm sorry, I didn't hear your name.
Joey Lynn.
Okay.
And it is for items 42 through 46.
And what's your question on, oh, go ahead.
Well, actually, it's a concern and a request to have an extensive traffic study done. Due to them, there's no access to that area, and they would have to make a U-turn to access coming off of the 215, and that is our major, one of our major concerns with this plan, is to be sure that there's a major traffic study done.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Anybody else wish to be heard on any of the items that are going to be obeyed or withdrawn? Seeing none, I'll entertain a motion on the housekeeping items.
I'll do my best. Motion is to obey items 6, 23 through 26, 38 through 39, 42 through 46, 47, 52, 53, 56, 57, 59 through 61, and withdraw item 29 without prejudice. Did I get all of those?
Number 6 does not need to be included.
Oh, thank you very much.
Thank you, Commissioner.
Strike that with regard to number 6.
Yeah, 50 and 51 were included in the motion for abeyance.
If I might, items 23 through 26-
Yeah, we're gonna-
I didn't ask to obey them, we asked to hear them separately.
What?
Okay, thanks.
Excuse me, Mr. Chairman. Did 66, 67, 68 get included?
No, they didn't. Mr. Garcia, would you like those pulled?
Yes, so I-
Can you state your name and address?
Want those obeyed for 30 days. I think we got, I've got a letter in, so just to clarify, requesting abeyance of those for 30 days. It's George Garcia, 711 Whitney Mesa Drive, Suite 110.
What are the numbers again?
66, 67, 68.
30 days.
And then, Mr., or Commissioner Moody, can you add those to your motion?
Yes, would it be easier if I restated this?
Probably. In just one moment, sir, state your name and address, please.
Pete Woodward, 200 West Sahara, the Allure High Rise. I'm asking that we pull the number 16, the tattoo parlor, or hear it separately?
Pull it from the one-motion calendar?
Yes, please.
Okay. All right, now, Commissioner Moody, will you restate your motion?
All right. The motion is to pull from the one-motion-one-vote portion of the agenda items 16 and 23 through 26, withdraw item 29 without prejudice, and holding abeyance items 38 through 39, 42 through 47, 50 through 53, 56, 57, 59 through 61, and 66 through 68.
Beg your pardon?
16 was to be pulled.
Yes.
16 is to be pulled.
Okay, we have a motion. Please vote. Please post. Well, now, move on to the consent items portion of the agenda. Consent items are considered routine by the Planning Commission and may be enacted by one motion. However, any item may be discussed if a commission member or applicant so desires. I'll entertain a motion now on items 7, 8, 9, 10, 11, and 12 on the consent item portion of the agenda.
Mr. Chair, the motion is to approve items 7 through 12 on the consent portion of the agenda.
Thank you, Commissioner. Please post. Motion carries.
Mr. Chair, items 7 and 8 will go forward to City Council in ordinance form. Item number 9 is final action in the absence of an appeal within 10 days. Items number 10, 11, and 12 are final action in the absence of an appeal within seven days.
Okay, we're now going to move on to the one-motion-one-vote portion of the agenda. The following items that may be considered in one-motion-one-vote, they are considered routine, non-public, and public hearing items. All public hearings and non-public hearings will be opened at one time. Any person representing an application or a member of the public or a member of the Planning Commission not in agreement with the conditions and all standard conditions for the application recommended by staff should request to have that item removed from this part of the agenda, beginning with items 13, 14, and 15, which are all related items. Item number 13 is WVR 49163, the applicant owner, D.R. Horton, Inc., for possible action on a request for a waiver to allow an external intersection separation distance of 208 feet where 220 feet is required at the southeast corner of Dorrell Lane and Walupai Way in Ward 6, Councilman Ross. Staff is recommending approval. TMP 49164, for possible action on a request for a tentative map for a proposed 18-lot single-family residential subdivision in Ward 6, Councilman Ross. Staff is recommending approval. Item number 15, VAC 49184, for possible action on a request for a petition to vacate a 30-foot wide portion of Haley Avenue and U.S. Government Patent Easements generally located at the southeast corner of Dorrell Lane and Walupai Way in Ward 6, Councilman Ross. Staff is recommending approval. Item number 17, TMP 49525, applicant owner, Coleman Toll LP, for possible action on a request for a tentative map for a 166-lot, single-family residential subdivision on approximately 33.2 acres at the northwest corner of Elkhorn Road and Shamba Road in Ward 6, Councilman Ross. Staff is recommending approval. Item number 18, VAR 49483, applicant owner, William Lyon Homes, Inc., for possible action on a request for a variance to allow a 14-foot rear side, rear yard setback where 15 feet is required on 0.15 acres at 5940 Jasper Ridge Street in Ward 6, Councilman Ross. Staff is recommending approval. Item number 19, VAR 49484, applicant owner, William Lyons Home, Inc., for possible action on a request for a variance to allow a 14-foot rear yard setback where 15 feet is required on a 0.15 acres at 5964 Jasper Ridge Street, Ward 6, Councilman Ross. Staff is recommending approval. Item number 20, SUP 49432, the applicant is Jeff Hall, the owner is Yellow Brick Properties, LLC, for possible action on a request for a special use permit for a proposed 6,452 square-foot tavern limited establishment with 1,236 square feet of outdoor seating area and a corresponding request for an encroachment into the Main Street and Hoover Avenue Public Right's Way at 831 Main Street in Ward 3, Councilman Coffin. Staff is recommending approval. Item number 21, SUP 49490, the applicant is Setabelle, LLC, owner 9440 West Sahara Holdings, LLC, for possible action on a request for a special use permit for a proposed supper club use within a proposed 4,000-square-foot restaurant with a waiver to allow a 0-foot distance separation from a house of worship where 400 feet is required at 9350 West Sahara Avenue, Suite 170 in Ward 2, Councilman Beers. Staff is recommending approval. Item number 22, SUP, excuse me, yeah, SUP 49523, the applicant is Louis Cordy, owner is Abraham Schiff, for possible action on a request for a special use permit for a proposed tattoo parlor slash body piercing studio use at 25 Fremont Street in Ward 3, Councilman Coffin. Staff is recommending approval. Item number 27 is SUP 49626, the applicant is Lima Limon Peruvian Restaurant, the owner is Decatur Crossing Center, LLC, for possible action on a request for a special use permit for a proposed beer slash wine slash cooler on-sale establishment within an existing 3,432 square-foot restaurant at 222 South Decatur Boulevard, Ward 1, Councilwoman Tarkanian. Staff is recommending approval. Item number 28 is SDR 49466, the applicant owner is Twin Lakes Baptist Church, for possible action on a request for a site development plan review for onsite improvements and landscaping for the development of a future church and commercial pads on 10 acres at the northwest corner of West Cliff Drive and Rainbow Boulevard, going C1, limited commercial zone, Ward 1, Tarkanian, council, excuse me, in Ward 1, Councilwoman Tarkanian. Staff is recommending approval. At this time, is there anybody who wants to be heard on any of these items? If you'll please state your name and your address, please?
Yes, my name is Bridget Salvi, address 7030 North Conquistador Street, and I'd like to request that the items 13, 14, and 15 be pulled to discuss conditions related to these items.
Okay, thank you. Anybody else wish to be heard on any of these items? Seeing none, I'll entertain a motion on the one vote, excuse me, on the one-motion-one-vote portion of the agenda. We are going to be voting on items 17, 18, 19, 20, 21, 22, 27, and 28.
Mr. Chair, the motion is to approve items 17- Yes? 17, 18, 19, 20, 21, 22, 27, and 28.
Thank you, Commissioner. Please post. Motion carries.
Mr. Chair, item 17 is final action in the absence of an appeal within seven days. Items 18, 19, 20, 21, 22, 27, and 28 are final action in the absence of an appeal within 10 days.
Okay, we're going to start with items 13, 14, and 15, which are related items, starting with item 13, WVR 49163, applicant owner, D.R. Horton, Inc., for possible action on a request for a waiver to allow an external intersection separation distance of 208 feet where 220 feet is required at the southeast corner of Dorrell Lane and Walupai Way in Ward 6, Councilman Ross. Staff is recommending approval. Item number 14 is TMP 49164, for possible action on a request for a tentative map for a proposed 18-lot, single-family residential subdivision, Ward 6, Councilman Ross. Staff is recommending approval. Item 15, VAC 49184, for possible action on a request for a petition to vacate a 30-foot wide portion of Haley Avenue and U.S. Government Patent Easements generally located at the southeast corner of Dorrell Lane and Walupai Way in Ward 6, Councilman Ross. At this time, I will be abstaining on this matter, for my, my brother is one of the owners of the property that's at issue here, and so Commissioner Moody will be taking over.
Thank you, Mr. Chair, and his acting chair, and because this is within Ward 6, I'm going to ask that Commissioner Goines act as chair so that I can make a motion on, on these items.
Thank you. That's, for those of you out there, that's not passing the buck. Item 13, I'll defer to staff for a report.
Thank you. Commissioner, the proposed map is in conformance with Title 19 and Nevada revised statute requirements for tentative maps. The separation distance between intersections on the perimeter of the site does not pose any safety risk, and the existing right-of-way and patent easements are not needed. Staff, therefore, recommends approval of the proposed tentative map, subject to conditions. The Department of Public Works would like to amend condition number 7 as part of this action. Thank you.
Thank you, staff. I'd like to hear from the applicant, Mr. Grunauer?
Good evening, Commissioners. My name is Bob Grunauer, 8345 West Sunset Road. I'm here representing the applicant, which is D.R. Horton. About a month ago, you heard a discussion on this matter, on these three items. Since then, there was a neighborhood meeting, and the adjacent property here, that is to the east of the existing land that's here today, was approved by the Clark County Commission last Wednesday for a similar development. At issue at the county commission meeting last Wednesday was the access onto Dorrell. There was a condition that was approved on that application that required the applicant at that time to work with the city traffic engineering department to come up with a traffic calming device at the corner or intersection of Dorrell and Walupai. Tonight, staff is recommending approval of item 13, 14, and 15. It's my understanding that there is an added condition, which is somewhat similar to the condition that I just mentioned that was added on a similar application last Wednesday. It's on item number 14, on condition number 10. I believe that the Public Works will be adding a condition that states that, at the end of that sentence, it states, "Work with Clark County Public Works to design and construct appropriate traffic calming measures on Dorrell Lane acceptable to the city traffic engineer." With that being said, I know there's some neighbors in the area that want to make some comments. I'll reserve additional comments based on the issues that are brought up.
Thank you, Mr. Grunauer. This is a public hearing. At this time, I'll open the public hearing. If anybody would like to speak for or against this item, please feel forward to come down at this time. Thank you.
Good evening, Commissioners. I'm Bridget Salvi, 7030 North Conquistador Street. And as a neighbor in the area, this just happens to be the map that I have. The condition that Bob Grunauer, Mr. Grunauer, referenced would be about where this ink pen is indicating. The blue property highlighted is the county portion, the red property is the city in discussion tonight.
Ms. Salvi, could you please point with your finger to where your residence is?
My residence is right here. It is a north-south rectangular one-acre.
Thank you.
I live, my address is actually Conquistor, my property runs along Dorrell. Specific to that last item that Mr. Grunauer addressed about the condition, the added condition that we are concerned about is that traffic calming or restricting median, whatever device is, is determined by county and city, because the city pretty much has to elect to do it, because it's a city portion. We would like to further add to that condition on the city parcel that until the time that that device is actually installed and active as a traffic restricting or traffic mitigating device, that there would be some kind of temporary barricade at this indicated point where Yula meets the alignment at Dorrell, so that construction traffic supporting these two projects does not find its way traveling through the neighborhood. There is no access, this road here is not yet declared and paved. If construction traffic is allowed to penetrate into the RNP by going to this eastern line, they will have to branch and branch again and come through the neighborhood directly to get to Grand Canyon on the east. So it's our intention to see if you would approve an added condition specific to the city property, to put in some kind of temporary three-rail or some kind of device that at the time the construction is near build-out completion or at build-out completion, then it can be removed, so the neighborhood can be saved, the added traffic of construction and workers and different folks that'll come through and just take their lunch break in our neighborhood. Thank you.
Thank you.
My name is Randy Sterns. I live at 9865 Elkhorn Road, and I agree with what Bridget said, but I also want to add that for the safety of the neighborhood and the people who live in the neighborhood, that blocking that off until the Pork Chopper Chevron is finished would make it a lot safer. So to just have it blocked off except for local traffic is what we're asking for.
Thank you very much. Anybody else like to speak for or against the item?
I was chicken, but here I am. Michelle Dishan, 9690 Whittig Avenue. I'm about a little bit north of Bridget, the first speaker. I also am just a little bit concerned about the traffic going through this location in our RNP, the rural neighborhood. I know my neighbor's concerned she couldn't make it with the horses and the trails that we walk on with those animals and the traffic from the construction. If we can't somehow block that off, that the, we can't go through that street. So ditto to what they said. Thank you.
Thank you. Seeing no one else, I'll close the public hearing. I'll ask the applicant to come back up. Mr. Grunauer, I'm sure you've heard the concerns of the neighbors. Can you talk a little bit about the calming device, if, if being proposed, and what, what kind will it be, and are you amenable to adding to that condition number 10 that's going to be read in by Public Works in reference to a temporary barricade at, I believe it was Dorrell, and I think she said Lula Lane? Thank you.
Yeah, there's two parts to your question. The first answer is, by me reading the condition number 10, accepting whatever the traffic engineering department's going to require us to do, we will do. Standing up here today, in all fairness, I don't know what that traffic calming device is. You got to get the city public works department and the county public works department to agree on what that device will be. We've already agreed, we said we would do that at the county commission level last Wednesday. We're telling you tonight, we're going to do that again here. It's going to be subject to the city and the county telling us what needs to be put there. As far as blocking off any access on Dorrell east of Yula there, we're fine to do it. I don't know if that's a public safety issue, because it's a public street, and you're going to just barricade a street and just put a barrier across. If the city and the county want to do that, that's fine with us. That's something that need, we would need to get the approval, and I think that's a public safety issue, but that's for your determination there.
Thank you. And I do believe that right-of-way is a county right-of-way, and I don't know if we could do anything with that either.
And if, if anything, and I know your city attorneys here and staff, if, if it's determined to be a public safety issue, we could always add an added condition that we do with other developments, that you cannot have any construction traffic that goes east of Yula on Dorrell. We typically have that when we're around and in RNP areas. We put those added conditions on applications. In this instance, D.R. Horton would not be adverse to adding that condition on there if you cannot block the public street there east of Yula on Dorrell.
Thank you, Mr. Grunauer. Questions, comments from the board? Commissioner Truesdale?
Yeah, I, I'm glad to see that the developer and the neighbors met and discussed things, and I'm not so sure it's the ultimate solution. and I'm not so sure it's the ultimate safety hazard, because half the streets I drive down in the city these days are blocked off for one reason or another, but usually for construction, not to stop the construction traffic. But I think that's a reasonable request on the neighbor's part, and I think it doesn't add any greater burden onto the development during the construction phase. So, if that's, you know, the way the motion is, I'll support it.
Thank you. Commissioner Bonar?
Yes, I, in my travels, there's an intersection in North Las Vegas that has what I believe Ms. Salvi's intention is for the intersection, and if I need to remember the intersection, which I don't at the moment, I'd be glad to do that for our Public Works people, but it looked very much as what was going to work as a traffic calming device. So I'd like to recommend that to our Public Works department, and be glad to accompany them to do a site search for that intersection. Thank you.
Commissioner Moody, Vice Chairman Moody.
Thank you very much. I think it's important, and I know Mr. Gronauer stated this, but we are working closely with the county on this, and because just last week, they considered the D.R. Horton project at Dorrell and Yula, and approved that project with access to the subdivision from Dorrell Lane, as well as approving another project being developed by Richmond American. It was explained that this water line would be serving the Richmond American project on the east side of Yula Lane, and would have to be located on Dorrell, on the Dorrell Lane right-of-way, and that was one of the justifications, I believe, for the development of Dorrell Lane. There were three conditions that were stated at the county commission meeting by Commissioner Brown, including, one, county public work staff shall work with the city of Las Vegas to develop a traffic calming device at the entrance to Dorrell Lane at Wallop. Two, Dorrell Lane shall be developed to non-urban standards, and three, streetlights are discouraged on Dorrell Lane. I know there were also some well-water concerns. We really haven't talked about them, so I don't know that it's important to go into too much detail, but I agree with the condition that, I want the similar condition that the county commission added, and I think we've stated that with regard to condition number ten. And it's worth repeating, "Work with Clark County Public Works to design and construct appropriate traffic calming measures on Dorrell Lane, acceptable to the city traffic engineer." I don't know if we can force traffic to stop until construction's finished, but I think what we can do is say, "We will work with Clark County," and if they agree to do that, great. Mr. Gronauer stated that he will agree to the condition that no construction traffic would go east of Yula, I believe.
East of Yula.
And so my motion is going to be, if we're prepared for that, with regard to item thirteen, move for approval. And which item are we going to put the condition on?
Fourteen.
Number fourteen.
Number fourteen. So, motion is for approval of item thirteen.
Commissioners, Vice Chairman Moody has proffered a motion for approval of item fourteen, TMP four nine one six four.
Item thirteen.
Or item thirteen, I'm sorry, WVR four nine one six three. Cast your vote for approval. And that motion has passed, with Chairman Flengus abstaining. Motion on item fourteen?
Thank you, Commissioner Goins. With regard to item fourteen, move for, move to follow staff's recommendation for approval, subject to the modified condition ten, as was read into the record, as well as the agreed-on condition that no construction traffic would go east of Yula. Is that stated correctly?
Yeah, that's stated, and for clarification, if Clark County and the city traffic engineering departments decide to block off Yula east, on Dorrell east of Yula, we're fine with that. So I think that's incorporated in there. So I want the neighbors to know, we're not saying no. It's just let the city and county tell us to do it.
I appreciate that. Thank you.
Motion's on the floor for approval of item fourteen, TMP four nine one six four, with the amended and added to condition number ten. A yes vote is for approval. Cast your vote. And that motion has passed, with Chairman Flengus abstaining. Motion on item fifteen?
Motion is to follow staff's recommendation for approval on item fifteen.
Motion for approval on item fifteen, VAC nine four nine, four nine one eight four. Please cast your vote. And that motion has passed, with Chairman Flengus abstaining.
Thank you for your time, and have a good night.
Please note that these applications, items number thirteen, fourteen, and fifteen, will go forward to the August twenty-first city council meeting.
Thank you, and I'll turn it back over to the chairman.
Thank you, Commissioner Goins. Going on to item number sixteen, which is SUP four nine one six seven. The applicant is George H. Rodriguez. The owner's G Capital Investments, LLC. For possible action on a request for a special use permit for a tattoo parlor slash body piercing studio use at two hundred West Sahara Boulevard in Ward Three, Councilman Coffin. Staff is recommending approval. Staff?
Mr. Chairman, real quick, I am going to abstain on this item. As I stated last time, I do own an interest in property within the notice area.
Thank you, Commissioner Truesdale.
Mr. Chairman, the proposed use complies with all Title Nineteen land use requirements, and therefore can be conducted in a manner that is compatible and harmonious with that of the surrounding area. Therefore, staff is recommending approval of this application. Please note that additional letters of protest have been received after the publishing. Thank you.
Thank you. I'd like to hear from the applicant, please. And sir, if you'll state your name and give us your address, please.
My name is George Rodriguez, H. Rodriguez. My current address is two hundred West Sahara Boulevard. That's been my, that's been my current address for about seven months now. I do not know the correct zip code.
Sir, have you had a chance to review the conditions?
As far as parking, and I believe those are the only conditions.
You've got five conditions. Do you accept the conditions that are printed on the agenda? Excuse me, that you receive in your packet? Sir, may it might help if you'd just tell us what you're trying to do, and a little bit about your project?
Okay, I'm sorry about that. So this is my first time.
That's okay. Just tell us about it.
All I'm trying to do is just, I'm just trying to launch a tattoo parlor on the retail space, two hundred West Sahara Boulevard. They have, they have locations on the outside of the building, and I'm here for, to see if I could prove for my license.
Okay, thank you. I'll now open this up for public comment. Does anybody wish to be heard on this matter? And ma'am, if you'll state your name and address for the record, please?
Absolutely. My name is Kenyatta Robinson, twenty-nine seventeen Tropic Bird. I am the general manager of the Allure Homeowners Association. I'm here with Pete Woodward, who is our president, as well as several homeowners. Altogether, we represent about a thousand residents. We are respectfully requesting that you deny the special use permit. Allure is a luxury high-rise, and we feel that a tattoo parlor and piercing studio is neither beneficial or conducive to a luxury high-rise residential building. In addition, the planned use of the commercial space actually violates our governing documents, and is prohibited by the documents that the landlord, who is the owner of the commercial space, signed on for when she purchased the property.
Yes, I would.
And you're Mr. Woodward?
Yes, I'm the president of the homeowners association. And like Kenyatta was saying, our general manager, I'm here representing a thousand people. I know I'm just one voice, but I'm one, you know, my constituents have come to me adamantly, wanting this special use permit to be denied. And there's nothing against George. I mean, I can, the man standing next to me is a fine resident of the building, but if we put a tattoo parlor down there, I feel, and the residents feel, it's going to negatively affect the property values of our building. If, when you look at the Allure high-rise, it's facing Sahara, which is a major thoroughfare, and we're very close to the Las Vegas Boulevard, but the type of image that that's going to portray in our building, it's going to take our luxury high-rise status and just, and put a black mark on it. Tattoo studios in this town, and in every town, in my opinion, in the opinion of the residents of the building, are very closely related to something of a novelty shop. Some might say even the, some sex practice businesses, and that's just not conducive in a residential community. And we do understand, we do live on Las Vegas Boulevard, but we are a place where, that's our home, and where he wants to put his business is our living room. That's where our lobby is. And it's just going to, I just did a brief, a real easy calculation. We have four hundred and twenty-seven units in that building. The average value of the building right now is three hundred thousand dollars per unit. So that gives us a one point, one hundred and twenty million dollars' worth of property value in that building. If that tattoo parlor negatively affected our building by just ten percent, that would be twelve million dollars of decreased tax revenue that the city would gain, or the city would not get. And that's just, and in my opinion, ten percent is a very low estimate. If we put a tattoo parlor down there, it's really going to affect the property values of four hundred and twenty-seven residents in that building. And just using ten percent as an easy number to calculate, at twelve million dollars of lost tax-based revenue, it wouldn't, not only would it not only negatively affect us, it's going to affect the city of Las Vegas. It's going to be taxed about, you know, dollars that you're not going to receive. There's another part of this, which is, in our governing documents, it also states there's, we don't allow any business to be down there that creates a hazardous environment. When you own a tattoo parlor in the city, you have to belong to a biohazard cleanup. So, that, you have needles that are, that are, that are used for tattooing, and they have to be picked up by a biohazard company. Again, that's something that shouldn't be in a residential building. The cotton swabs and the blood that come from tattooing, again, is a biohazard. This is our, this is a community. If, it's where we walk our dogs, it's where we walk our pets, it's where we plan to hopefully have a restaurant next to his business someday, or some outdoor seating. The last thing we need is a biohazard company coming in there, picking up needles, dealing with blood, dealing with swabs. So again, it's not conducive. There's not another luxury high-rise building in Las Vegas right now that has that type of establishment in its retail space. If you look around town, you'll see restaurants, you'll see convenience store locations, you'll see drugstores, ice cream parlors, coffee shops. Not tattoo parlors, not in residential living. It's fine, there are, there's plenty of vacant retail space, literally.
Thank you, Mr. Woodward. If we can limit the discussions to a few minutes, and ma'am, would you like to be heard on this matter?
I agree.
And if so, please state your name and give us your address, please.
I'm Catherine Anderson, and I am a resident at two hundred West Sahara, and I have a three-bedroom unit there. It would impact the value of my three-bedroom dramatically. There are tattoo parlors right around the corner, two of them, already in our neighborhood. And I think putting one inside our building is extremely unnecessary. Additionally, we do not have any parking for that tattoo parlor. The, there is zero parking, as a matter of fact. And I think that a business of that nature should look to a space that has parking spaces. Thank you.
Thank you. Ma'am, if you'll state your name and address, please?
Marilyn Montague, two hundred West Sahara Ave., Unit twenty-six oh four. The zip is eight nine one oh two. I bought the unit as, I bought the unit as investment, like most other people, but I live there full-time, twenty-four seven. And as she mentioned before, there is no public parking whatsoever. Our valet fills up very quickly with residents and guests. There is literally no parking there. That's one issue. In addition to the fact Pete mentioned ten percent, in my opinion, I think it would decrease our values fifty percent. When the manager referred to luxury high-rise, she wasn't joking. I can tell you firsthand, I don't have a three-bedroom. I have a two-bedroom, and my, just my fees every year are almost ten thousand dollars. Fees, that's it, okay? So that equates to luxury high-rise, I would imagine. And I'm not being sarcastic, it's just upsetting to me because of the fact that I put a lot of money in this place, and I, and I love living there, and I want it to stay beautiful like it is.
Thank you. I appreciate it. Ma'am, if you'll state your name and address, please?
Patricia Roth, two hundred West Sahara Avenue, Las Vegas, Nevada, eight nine one one nine. I also obviously live in the building. It is a luxury high-rise. We do have the problems that were mentioned before with hazardous waste, not enough parking. We also have a problem with the hours of operation. Our CCNRs say eight to five. It's my understanding Mr. Rodriguez would like to work from ten AM till two AM. Really doesn't work for a high-rise building for a residential area, where we have people walking their pets in the evening, in the small hours, when they got to go, they got to go. And women out there by themselves. We wish him all the luck in the world, wherever he opens up. We hope it's not with us. We'd like to be able to not worry about who's going to be hanging out there, what they're going to do, and worry about the waste. So we hope that you don't approve this. Thank you.
Thank you. Sir, would you state your name and address, please?
George Roth, at two hundred West Sahara, Unit thirty-six oh two. And my wife just spoke, but I, I'm going to bring you another perspective on this problem. I've been in Las Vegas since nineteen seventy, developing small businesses, and I have even developed and financed a tattoo operation. But this particular business model that he's undertaking is a failure. It's not going to work. And the only, the worst thing that can happen is to have something like this, if you would have it next door to you in your neighborhood, you wouldn't want it to have a failed business, a failed tattoo parlor next to you. We don't want to have a failed tattoo parlor next to us either. And I'd like, I'd be glad to advise him as to, and actually even get him money to go someplace else to put it together. But this location isn't going to work. It's not a matter of being right or wrong. It just doesn't work.
Thank you, sir. Ma'am, if you'll state your name and address, please?
My name is Barbara Zukowski. I also live at the Allure, two hundred West Sahara Avenue, Las Vegas, eight nine one oh two, Unit twelve oh seven. I bought my condominium there about three and a half years ago, and it certainly was not with the thought of having a tattoo parlor on the bottom floor. My neighbors have brought up some excellent points. I'm also a registered nurse, and the biohazard aspect I hadn't even thought of, and that I take very seriously as a medical professional. Also, the hours that the, the business would be open is just not conducive in, to the flavor of our building. So I'd like to personally express my opposition to this particular retail endeavor. Thank you.
Thank you. Sir, if you'll give me your name and address, please?
My name is Jerry Palua, two hundred West Sahara, eighty-nine one oh two, and I am one of the owners of a penthouse up there, which I bought three years ago. I've been coming to Las Vegas since nineteen seventy. I can remember when that section, you wouldn't even want to drive down there. The one thing I want to emphasize, I did go to the city hall a while back and get the parking requirements and the building permits or the building parking requirements and the building permits or the building information when the building was still only on paper. We did not get all the parking -- one thing I should mention, I was the former president and a board member, so I know some of the inside information. But we did not even get the necessary parking that we should have gotten when half the project was deleted. So now we have a parking problem. Valet is 24/7, it fills up, we don't have enough parking for the residents that have purchased units. The street is filled up because employees and vendors that come in to work in the building are there. So one of your commissioners had mentioned parking. I'm not sure how a retail operation is going to satisfy that situation, and it's going to be a major burden and a financial loss, not only to us homeowners but to the city. Thank you.
Thank you, sir. I'll give you the last word. Wait a minute, we got somebody else coming. Ma'am, if you'll give us your name and address, please.
Good evening, gentlemen. My name is Lita Young. I'm representative of the landlord of the retail space here. Yeah, before we signed a lease agreement with this gentleman here and we giving him the interview, okay, and we see his artwork, okay? All his -- the project he presented to us is very high-end artistic work, okay? And his client consists of list of the some pro athletic and celebrities, some movie stars. That's why we decide, you know, I'm no offense to any other, you know, tattoo shop on the corner, but his shop is different than any others, you know, it's very high-end artwork. That's all I have to say.
Thank you. And then I'll give the applicant the last word before I open up to the commissioners.
From my understanding, that retail space has been open since 2006. And since 2006, since the building of Allure has opened, I mean, the area, the neighborhood behind it, the property tax can't go any down more than what it is. I mean, if everyone's familiar with the area of Cincinnati and the whole neighborhood behind the Allure, I mean, it can't go down any further than what it is.
Thank you, sir. Anybody else wish to be heard on this matter? Saying none, I'll close the public comment portion and open it up for discussion amongst the board. Commissioner Goines?
Just a couple of questions for the applicant. Seems like the resounding theme here is, and sometimes people find something to latch on to and hold on to, but we've heard biohazard, biohazard, biohazard. How do you plan on taking care of the biohazards and the needles?
I have to be registered for a biohazard pickup, and the company that I called, they usually pick up with tattoo shops from every three to six months. Being in the fact that it is in that area that is, I have them flexibility where they could pick up every hour if I would want them to pick them up. It's just going to cost a little more money.
Okay, thank you. That's about all my questions. Just a couple of comments to the residents. And I understand the concern here, but you have to keep in mind, you're on the corner of Las Vegas Boulevard in Sahara, and I don't think you're going to get Mayberry RFD with a white picket fence sitting right on the corner there, so. But I do understand your investment. I do understand that, you know, as we now move into another phase of this planning, we've got to look at how we're going to have residential blend in up and down our heavily traveled corridors, which is heavily tourist. And so from a planning perspective, we're going to have to look at how we blend that. But do keep in mind where you are, and I understand that, but this is a retail request. The request has gone through the due diligence of staff, and staff has come back with a recommendation of approval. So I just want you to keep that in mind as we discuss this item a little bit further. Thank you, Mr. Chairman.
Thank you, Commissioner Goines. Commissioner Slotman? Or Commissioner Bonar?
A couple of comments. One to the audience and the applicant as well, but more so to the building manager, that there's some conflict between the hours of operation and your own CCNRs. And I'd like you to, when it's time, to come back up and tell the residents how you're going to deal with those -- that difference in hours of operation. Just a reminder that the city can't enforce CCNRs, to my knowledge, and you would have to do that as the residents. So you may want to be prepared for that, but don't let that go lightly. And I would like to hear what the owner's rep has to say about that. I do want to say one thing, and this is a planning or a land use matter, that's what we deal with here. This is a mixed-use project. I guess there was always going to be some retail on the base floor. I'm a little confused as to how you can have a restaurant in that same space if you don't have parking for even a tattoo parlor. But I'll let you deal with that separately. If there's going to be a restaurant, obviously, we're going to see if there's enough parking for any restaurant that involves outsiders rather than residents. But more than anything, this is a mixed-use project, and I think you've pushed the limits of mixed use when you put something with the biohazards involved into the front living room of the resident's home regardless of the value of those units. I think this mixed use is not something that I want in my backyard. That's all.
Thank you, Commissioner Bonar. Just real quick, if we could have the landlord's rep come back up to the podium. And did you hear the question from Commissioner Bonar?
Yes.
Would you go ahead and give him a response?
As far as the parking issue, okay, I know that is the -- they have the 30 to 35, you know, the guest parking for the valet parking. Yes. They have the 30 to 35 space for the garage parking. It's for valet parking.
Excuse me if I may, but I think his question was more specific, was how are you going to deal with the hours of operation that the applicant is -- or Mr. Rodriguez is proffering to us versus what your documents, your governing documents say?
You mean the hours?
Yeah. Ma'am, what I mean by that is, Mr. Rodriguez is proposing to us to operate from, I believe, in the morning until 2:00 a.m. in the evening. What I've heard from the residents, and what we've all heard from the residents, is that there are governing documents that restrict the hours of operation that a business can have. And Commissioner Bonar's question was, how do you rectify this? I mean, how do you -- how do you deal with this? Because it appears that the hours of operation that Mr. Rodriguez is proposing is not within the scope of your governing documents.
You mean the business hours, that portion that I have to discuss with the --
Ma'am, you got to probably get closer to the mic because we can't hear you at all up here.
Okay. Whenever the, you know, that decision I have to leave to the commissioner and just regulate the business hours, that's the thing. And we, besides the tattoo shop, we also have the coffee shop, okay? And also the other beauty salon, all these, just like the Mr. Bonar says, you know, the parking issue, we have the, you know, besides we have the street, it's called the Fairfield, and also we have 30 to 35 garage cover parking. And as far as I know, that is the zoning for the Centennial.
I appreciate it, ma'am, but the question we just asked you specifically had to do with the hours of operation. Commissioner Slotman, do you have anything?
Yes, Chairman. You know, I'm not particularly sure how this ever got passed by the landlord. If it doesn't meet the CCNRs, and, you know, I feel for the applicant if he doesn't know anything about the CCNRs, but if it doesn't meet the CCNRs, you're basically going to get fined every week that you're in there doing business, and you better be doing a hell of a lot of business to be able to pay for all the fines that you're going to get for not meeting the time restrictions or operating a business that's not allowed within that building. So, you know, a fill of your block over in the Stratosphere or on Las Vegas Boulevard in an area that wasn't saturated, not saying this area is saturated, but I think it would be a little bit more receptive. But what we're hearing from a lot of the neighbors here is that they don't want it in that particular building. And this is a protected use or, I mean, special use permits required for this, and we have to make sure that it's right for the particular area that it's going within. And if we're hearing from all the neighbors that, I mean, personally, I can't speak for all my colleagues up here, but if everybody is saying that they don't want it in this particular neighborhood, it's kind of hard for me to step up and support this particular item. So there might be a better location for you. I'm not worried about the needles because I know that you have particular standards that you'll follow and you'll call the correct biohazard people to come pick them up, and you're not just throwing them in the dumpster in the back of the Allure building. But, you know, I would probably run after the man in the green shirt because he said that he was going to give you funding for another place. So get your running shoes on after this meeting. The -- I'm just not sure if this is the right decision, the right place, if you have so many people that's within that particular condo tower that's against it. And there's nothing against you and nothing against your business. It's just it's what the people feel within that particular community. So those are my thoughts.
Thank you, Commissioner. Any other commissioners wish to be heard? If saying none, I'll entertain a motion.
Yes, and there are tons of different items up on my screen that's not highlighted. Okay. So on item number 16, advance item re-notification, SUP 49167, I would make a motion for denial based on the overwhelming amount of people that come out and opposition this tonight and, you know, feeling that it really doesn't fit that particular property.
Thank you, Commissioner. Please vote, noting that a yes vote is for denial. Motion for denial carries, noting the abstention of Commissioner Truesdale.
Mr. Chair, that item is final action in the absence of an appeal within 10 days.
Thank you. Moving on now to item number 23, which is SUP 5 -- excuse me, 49539. The applicant is Arleni LLC. The owner is T-LVCR LLC. For possible action on a request for a special use permit for a packaged liquor off-sale establishment use at 18 Fremont Street in Ward 5, Councilman Barlow. Staff is recommending approval. Staff?
Mr. Chairman, the applicant is requesting approval of a special use permit for packaged liquor off-sale use within the Las Vegas Club Hotel and Casino located at 18 Fremont Street. All conditions of Title 1912 are being met, and the use is compatible with existing developments in the area. Therefore, staff is recommending approval. Thank you.
Thank you. I'd like to hear from the applicant, please. And ma'am, if you'll state your name and address, please.
Good evening. Amanda Litt, 630 South 4th Street, representing Arleni LLC.
Okay, would you tell us about your project?
Yes. Arleni LLC owns many convenience stores in Las Vegas, in the city and Wells Clark County. It's a novelty shop. They go by the name of Viva Vegas is their trade name, and they sell anything from Las Vegas t-shirts, mugs, keychains, all sorts of novelties of that sort. They're requesting at this time to allow to sell packaged liquor at this establishment. And it'll be located inside the Las Vegas Club Hotel.
Thank you. I'll now open this matter up for public comment. Does anybody wish to be heard? And if you'll state your names and addresses, please.
My name is Jeff Victor. I'm the president of the Fremont Street Experience. I live at the Ogden at 150 Las Vegas Boulevard, 89101.
My name is Terry Murphy. My office address is 516 South 6th Street, Las Vegas, Nevada. And I'm here on behalf of the Fremont Street Experience, as well as members of the Fremont East District have contacted me to express their opinions on the matter, as well as the D Hotel and the Golden Gate Hotel. My comments will pertain -- you have three more packaged liquor items before you tonight. My comments are going to pertain to all of them because they are in general about the sale of packaged liquor on Fremont Street. Currently, and staff will correct me if I'm wrong, there are six packaged liquor establishments on a four-block length of Fremont Street. Tonight, you have the opportunity to have 10 packaged liquor establishments in a four-block length of Fremont Street. When I first learned about these applications for packaged liquor sales on Fremont Street, I thought, well, what's the big deal? There are up and down -- there's liquor all up and down the street, it's an entertainment venue, for crying out loud, what is the problem? I also thought, maybe this looks a little bit like, a little bit anti-competitive. This is going to be a hard argument for me to make. But my clients, the D, Golden Gate, Fremont Street, I then heard from others on Fremont East, I heard from residents who live downtown, and so I thought, I better do some homework. And I've spent the last 36 hours pretty much doing nothing but my homework on this matter. And I've learned a lot. If I had another day or two, I think I could present a lot of empirical evidence or more empirical evidence to why we are opposed to this, but I'll share what I've learned. I'm ashamed to say that as president of the Downtown Las Vegas Alliance, I should have already known what I learned in the last 36 hours, and I didn't. One of the questions that I had, which was actually echoed to me by some of you, was what about when Mr. and Mrs. Jones come from Detroit or Atlanta or wherever they come from, and they want to get a bottle of wine or a bottle of Jameson or what have you, take it to their room, have a few drinks before they go to the show, and then have a night cop when they go back? There is nothing wrong with that. They should have that ability to do that. So they do have that ability. What I learned last night, I went into the majority of the hotels downtown on Fremont Street, most of them have gift shops which offer wine and beer and some of the major brands of alcohol. Also, within steps of every hotel downtown are gift shops that sell alcohol. So they have many choices. In fact, the exhibit that we have there is one of the gift shops, which I learned last night, is more like a liquor store that happens to sell t-shirts. Most of them are. And so there are plenty of opportunities for the average tourist to buy whatever kind of alcohol they want. Another concern that I heard on this item was, what about free enterprise? And I had that concern myself. I thought, this is a C2 zone, it's an allowable use, next to other allowable uses, what's the problem? But it requires a special use permit, and there's a reason for that. And I'm going to get into that a little bit later because it affects the broader community. These applications affect the broader community. Further, on the topic of competition, I was told by three hotel executives, as well as Mr. Victor, that if these applications, like application number 21 on your agenda tonight, which we did not oppose, were for taverns or restaurants that sell alcohol, we wouldn't be here. We're here because it's packaged liquor, and packaged liquor is different than selling liquor at a bar. Fremont Street Experience leases some of their space to a Walgreens. In their lease, it specifically prohibits the sale of packaged liquor. Why? Because when Fremont Street Experience first started, and the 7-Eleven that used to be on the other side of Las Vegas Boulevard and Fremont sold packaged liquor, there were a lot of incidents. were a lot of incidents having to do with that sale. When it no longer sold, when it closed down, those incidents dissipated. And so, they specifically, even though they could have made a lot more money on the lease, decided not to allow packaged liquor sales in their own property. So, when the first packaged liquor permit was approved, Fremont Street Experience opposed it, but it was approved anyway. And now, there are six, and again, by the end of the night, tonight, there could be ten. So, it's not about competition. I hope that I have demonstrated that it is not about competition, it is about public safety. So, my next question was, what's the difference between buying a drink in a store or at a bar and going into a gift shop slash liquor store and getting a bottle or a bottle of wine? Well, at the bar, there's a bartender who works for a casino whose owner possesses a non-restricted gaming license. The bartender, and I talked to several last night, has a tam card as everyone who sells liquor in Clark County is required to, but he's also trained to know when someone's had too much, and he knows he's got to cut them off. At the bar outside the D, I watched flair bartenders doing their tricks with the bottles and serving drinks. They cut you off. When you're falling down drunk, they cut you off. Nobody can go up to a bar and order a twelve-pack of Four Loko or a bottle of Jack Daniels and walk away and share it with their friends, or five twelve-packs. They can order one drink at a time. What I observed outside the liquor stores last night was people coming out with twelve-packs, like that, standing up against the trash cans that are paid for by the Fremont Street Experience, opening those twelve-packs, putting them in a bag, getting a little bag, putting a big bottle of whatever, or can of whatever they're drinking, and leaning up against the trash cans in place of a bar. They drink the beer, they put it down. And I'll tell you in a minute why that act alone is illegal, but it went on all night up and down the street. Then I learned that last Sunday night, there was another stabbing on Fremont Street under the canopy, and the perpetrator in that instance was found with a can of Four Loko in his hand. I learned that you can buy two twenty-four ounce cans of Four Loko for five dollars. I also learned that in February, the Federal Trade Commission issued an order compelling the makers of Four Loko to change its packaging so that consumers would finally know that one can of Four Loko is the equivalent of consuming four point seven cans of beer. So, for five dollars, people are walking away with the equivalent of ten beers in two cans. You can't get that at any bar downtown, maybe on fifty cent beer night, but those are a thing of the past. And they can buy as many as they want, and there's no bartender to cut them off. The alcohol content in Four Loko is twelve percent. I saw that last night. Amstel Light is three and a half percent, Bex is five percent, and in a list of about sixty beers I looked at, the majority were five percent or less. Guinness, my favorite, was a little higher, but, but again, I can only buy one at a time at the bar. So, why does this matter? In this Morning Sun, there happened to be an article about underage drinking, and if there's someone on Fremont Street who's looking to make a quick buck and the eighteen-year-olds have five bucks to pay them to go in and buy two cans of Four Loko for five bucks, they're doing it. And there are kids up and down the street, on Fremont Street and on Fremont East, certainly every weekend, and they are not, they are causing public safety issues. This doesn't happen at the bars. Bartenders are not serving underage kids because, why? Casino has a privileged license. They check the ID of everyone they serve if they look like they're under twenty-one. In recent months, there's been an upsurge in gang activity, crime, underage drinking, and violent behavior in the area, a significant upsurge. The events are getting so out of hand that the hotel bars have been shutting down and hiring extra security to keep these people out of the, out of their properties. And I have, based on my observations, formed my own opinion, independent of whether I work for somebody or not in this particular matter, but as somebody who cares deeply about downtown, that the easily accessible, cheap, and strong liquor is a draw to this element that's coming downtown to Fremont Street. And that opinion is based on last night's observation, conversations with people from Metro, conversations from people who live at the Ogden and in Soho and in Jewel and people who work on the street and walk it every day and every night. I've heard the argument that more stores won't equal more sales. Maybe that's true, but effectively, there are three owners downtown of these stores. And if I didn't think I was going to sell more alcohol by having another permit, I wouldn't pay the license fee, I wouldn't pay the folks that are going to need to do the work, and I wouldn't go out and buy more inventory. I don't know, that's just a question I have, and I don't know what the answer is, it seems to me like a logical question. The Fremont Street Experience spends in excess of one million dollars a year on security and a significant amount more to bring tourists to this area. Fremont East Entertainment District, a small group of businesses including the Beet Coffee House, Radio City Pizza, as well as the El Cortez, Park on Fremont, Commonwealth, La Ti, those businesses actually have a significant investment by the city of Las Vegas itself through the visual improvement programs, through the Quick Start programs, through these grants that the city has given these businesses to open up. They are investing their own money. First of all, the folks on Fremont East pay more for the privilege of having their bars there through the entertainment district, they pay additional tax to be there. And they're spending all this money on security, basically to protect themselves from the folks that are drinking this cheap, easily available alcohol. Metro has provided a significant amount of additional revenue and resources downtown, and the only people that are not contributing to solving the problem are the smaller gift shops that are selling the alcohol to these kids. I'm almost through.
Okay, I was just going to ask you to wrap up here.
There is, there's a little bit more.
Thank you.
I won't go into the details of some of the recent events, but trust me, there have been many highly volatile, very dangerous events with large numbers of people downtown. Two final, very important points. The Las Vegas Municipal Code specifically states two things. One, a person licensed for the off-sale or on-off sale of alcoholic beverages shall post a sign no lower than three feet, no higher than seven feet, at each sale counter and at each entrance to the premises advertising to the effect that it is unlawful for a person to drink an alcoholic beverage or to possess an open container that was purchased in an original sealed or corked container, A, upon any premises, including the parking lot of an establishment which is licensed only for the off-sale or on-off sale of alcoholic beverages. That was happening all night long last night, in the store, out the store, open up, pop it in. Secondly, it says that upon property of, other than residential property, located within one thousand feet of an establishment which is licensed for on-sale. So, if I walk nine hundred feet and drink my Four Loko in front of the downtown cocktail room, that's illegal. It is impossible to be policing all of that right now. And finally...
Excuse me, not to interrupt you, but why is it impossible to police and enforce the rules and the laws that Fremont Street Experience has promoted, Fremont East has promoted? Are they, these not rules or laws worth improving?
There are too many people coming down and have too much access, and I'll let Jeff speak to it. I just want to give one final note from the city code in terms of what to consider in approving all of these special use permits. The city council, and this is from chapter six point five oh point one oh of the code, liquor control. The city council declares that this alcoholic beverage control chapter is an exercise of the regulatory powers delegated to the city council pursuant to the city charter and NRS. The regulations contained in this chapter involve, to the highest degree, I'm reading from the city code, "to the highest degree, the economic, social, physical, and moral well-being of the residents and taxpayers of this city. The sale or other disposition of alcoholic beverages is not a matter of right but of privilege, which would otherwise be unlawful if it were not exercised pursuant to a license. The privilege may be denied, revoked, conditioned, suspended, or subjected to any other disciplinary action for the protection of the safety, welfare, and health, peace, and morals of the residents and taxpayers thereof." There are residents and taxpayers of this city who have been contacting me over the last two days, basically pleading to do something about this issue. I thank you for your time, and I respectfully request that you consider this. We would love to see all of these applications denied, but if not, we would love to see them held because Metro, Business License, the Downtown Alliance, Fremont East, and Fremont Street Experience have been working with the Department of Business License to try to get our arms around this. We're not there yet. We need time to figure out what's going on. Thank you.
Thank you. Mr. Victor?
Yes, thank you. Good evening, commissioners. You know, I know it's a very easy assumption that I'm here to thwart competition. Please do not be confused by that argument. Downtown is flourishing with growth and competition. I'm a resident of downtown, I've been down as a president for seven years. I've worked very, very hard to help downtown grow outside of the bounds of the Fremont Street Experience and within. In those seven years, I've, with all that growth, I've never stood in front of you once to oppose anything, any kind of growth. Not one single tavern license on Fremont Street, not in Neonopolis, not on Fremont East, not on the sixty-one acres, not at the World Market Center, not in the eighteen B. I've never opposed any of those liquor licenses or any other type of growth. In the seven years, I've only stood in front of the city council one time to oppose something, and it was this issue. And it was back when the ABC got the first license for packaged goods, and then boom, there's five more, and now we're looking at three more. So, why do I care about this? Why I'm here to talk about this? Because this is a major safety concern. I know it seems like a thin line between a bartender and a cashier that sells t-shirts dispensing the same kind of product. It's an enormous difference. Behind me tonight are representatives of the Fremont East District. We have Sergeant Curtis from the Rangers behind us. I deal with, and listen, the applicant doesn't deal with first responders, the fire department and EMTs. They don't deal with the police department, they don't deal with the marshals, they don't have to hire private security, they don't have to hire dogs to patrol events. They don't have to do all that. So, I appreciate that to them, I look like I'm being anti-competitive. I assure you, I am not. These package sales are a very, very different animal, and they are causing major, major problems in the downtown area. And so, I'd be happy to go on, but you've heard a lot so far, and I'm maybe happy to answer questions if you have any.
Thank you, sir. State your name and address, please.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. Russell Rowe, thirty-nine hundred Paradise Road, here tonight on behalf of Boyd Gaming Corporation. I'll be brief, commissioners, we're here to speak in support of the comments of Terry Murphy and Jeff Victor tonight. Boyd Gaming is a member of Fremont Street Experience and has three properties, Downtown Fremont, Main Street Station, the Californian. And we're very sensitive to the, to issues of, there being concerns about it being competitiveness. We're sensitive to small business, and we've been very happy about how downtown has developed beyond Fremont Street. The city and the young entrepreneurs have just been doing a tremendous, tremendous job. But there have been events occurring that give us pause as to the impact and proliferation of, and accessibility of alcohol in the corridor, and we think it's time that maybe we all need to take a pause and examine this issue more thoughtfully with staff, with you all, with the community, and get our arms around this before we commit ourselves to a path that we might not be able to reverse. Thank you.
Thank you. Anybody else wish to be heard on this matter?
Good evening. I'm Karen Richardson. My business address is one five zero Las Vegas Boulevard North, Suite one sixty. We're on the ground floor of the Ogden. I'm in a partnership with a small quick-serve restaurant called Rachel's Kitchen at the Ogden, and we've been open since March fifth. We're very concerned about this issue as well, even though we're not on Fremont Street, we're actually in between Fremont and Stewart, and I can tell you, we have dealt with people on the, on the street walking by our location who are intoxicated or otherwise impaired, who stop on our patio or park their selves in the planters on the public sidewalk, and not only leave a mess, but in several occasions, we've had to call the ambulance services to pick people up. When I have to spend time doing that, then I can't spend time with my guests, and that's the impact it's having on, on my business. So, my partner and I are here to support the comments that have been previously made and would love to be part of any future activities on this issue. Thank you.
Thank you. Sir, your name and address, please?
Sean Spanier, fourteen fifteen South Arville. I'm in Ward One, and the problem they're speaking about tonight is not just a downtown problem, it's, it's a citywide problem. We have the same problem in Ward One. I'm sad to see that Commissioner Quinn is not here this evening. There's only a single reason why these packaged liquor, there's two reasons, it's profitable for the vendor, but I think we do a disservice to our citizens by allowing our industry to be able to afford liquor. They get drunk, homeless are able to afford to buy it, you know, they panhandle on a corner, they go right to the liquor store, I see it all the time, they go in, buy a twenty-four ounce, come out and drink it while they're panhandling for the next two dollars and fifty cents to buy the next can of beer. You know, I think we do a disservice to our city when we allow twenty-four ounce cans of beer to be sold that have twice the alcohol content that a twelve-ounce can of beer has in a six-pack. So, I think as commissioners here tonight, you have an opportunity to say, hey, you know, enough's enough. I like free enterprise as well, but when you have multiple establishments selling single cans of beer, we need to actually, as a community, figure out a way to curb it, because it is out of hand. It's in Ward One. The cleanup we did downtown was wonderful, but we pushed all those problems to the outer limits of downtown. So, we're seeing in our neighborhoods what we didn't see it before. So, I think we need to take a stand here eventually, sooner than later, and either tax the heck out of it like we do tobacco and just make it not affordable for them. If we can't change the laws, just stop it. They're all on special use permits. Tonight, you guys can make a stand and say, hey, enough's enough, let's see what we can do to curb it, obey it, come up a solution, do something. Thank you.
Thank you. Does anybody else wish to be heard?
Yes, good evening, Mr. Chairman, members of the commission. I'm Chris Kemfer. With me is Jay Brown. We are here, actually, on items twenty-four and twenty-five, which are the next two. We have a little bit of a concern, though, that these comments are addressed rather globally and are going to encompass comments that perhaps we need to make with regard to items twenty-four and twenty-five, so that we're not, make a decision on one item and then we're prejudiced by a decision that might be made. So, we'd respectfully request that however you handle it, either don't vote on twenty-three or allow us to make our presentation before a vote is taken. Thank you, Mr. Chairman.
If I couldn't, Mr. Chairman, each of these items will be taken separately, Mr. Kemfer, and I think that Ms. Murphy wanted her comments incorporated on twenty-three, twenty-four, twenty-five, and twenty-six, so she won't remake those comments, but we'll get to those items individually, and then you'll have an opportunity to address them.
I think what Mr. Kemfer is saying is if we vote on this one without their ability to make a presentation, it could probably get the domino effect going down the line between 23, 24, 25, and 26.
Got it. If that is the representation, then you may open all four items at the same time if you wish, Mr. Chairman.
I think that would be probably a good idea, seeing that these things are all in the general vicinity of each other, and it's going to be very difficult to rule on one and not the other, hearing all these comments. So what I'd like to do at this time is I'll read the other three items into the record, get staff's report on all three, and I guess we'll have to open it up to a universal discussion, and then we'll vote on each item individually. Is that copacetic, Mr. Gerbit?
That works.
Okay, I'm going to read now in item 24, which is SUP 49540. The applicant owner is Lachaim Fremont Associates Property, Inc., for possible action on request for special use permit for proposed retail establishment with accessory packaged liquor off-sale use within an existing 18,100 square-foot general retail store at 300 Fremont Street, Ward 5, Councilman Barlow. Item 25, which is SUP 49543, the applicant is Crazy Ely Western Village LLC. Owner HS Family Limited Partnership, for possible action on request for a special use permit for retail establishment with an accessory package liquor off-sale use within an existing 4,400 square-foot general retail store at 316 Fremont Street, Ward 5, Councilman Barlow. Staff is recommending approval. Item number 26, which is SUP 49574, the applicant is Arrelne LLC. The owner is Schiff Enterprises, for possible action on request for a special use permit for proposed beer/wine/cooler off-sale establishment within an existing 2,255 square-foot retail establishment at 21 Fremont Street, Ward 3, Councilman Coffin. Staff is recommending approval. And this is kind of a strange way we're going about this, and I'm plowing new ground here with this. Does anybody else wish to be heard on item number 23? Sir?
Good evening, gentlemen. I'm retired Sergeant Christopher Curtis from Metro. I just retired April 1st. I'm now consultant for Downtown Project. I have a unique view on what's occurring with the packaged liquor, particularly even in my own personal experience, I can't tell you a good story that's come from packaged liquor. Last First Friday, I worked in a quasi-undercover capacity as a consultant because of all the situations and violence that was occurring during First Friday, not connected to the First Friday event, but particularly on Fremont East. There were in excess of 550 people in a one-block area between Las Vegas Boulevard and Sixth Street. There were probably one in every four people was in possession of some type of packaged liquor. I have an extensive slideshow and video that shows the different violent acts that occurred and the people that are in possession of this alcohol. While I was working as a community-oriented policing sergeant for Metro, and that was just the beginning of this last year, there were several incidents where we conducted undercover operations where there would be a 21-year-old person that would go inside of one of these establishments, purchase packaged liquor, and then go out and hand it off to their 17-, 18-year-old friends. Nothing good can come from this. In fact, if it's predictable, it's preventable, and I can predict that something very violent is going to happen if we continue to have this green light allowing businesses to sell this for Locos and these other types of beers or types of alcohols. I also had the opportunity to do some traveling. Just came back from Seattle and Austin, Texas, to view their ambassador programs and how they handle their downtown areas. Their laws are very strict, and it's not an apples-to-apples comparison. However, I did learn some things, and the police were very adept at dealing with people who were walking with alcohol in the streets. And the commissioner asked earlier, why is it impossible to enforce these laws? It's impossible because of critical mass. I hire two Metro officers every weekend to work in these areas and enforce some of these laws, but when you have in excess of 200 or 300 people, two officers really can't do much, and it's difficult to sort which people purchased it inside of a place that's approved for off-sale alcohol. I think my general opinion, this whole thing, is I don't think that anything good can come from these establishments selling these types of alcohol. And in the long run, it'll make it a safer community if we start focusing on the businesses that are doing it different. My only ask to grind is that as a citizen of this community. Thank you.
Thank you. And Sergeant Carter?
Curtis.
Curtis, excuse me. Sergeant Curtis, do your comments apply to all four items, items 23, 24, 25, and 26?
Yes, and any subsequent ones that come before the council.
And anybody that speaks, I'm going to be asking the same questions because that way we'll avoid repetition on each individual item. At this time, does anybody else wish to speak on item number 23? Seeing none, I will close the public comment portion as to item 23. Open up the public comment port. First, let's hear from the applicant on item 24.
Good evening again, Mr. Chairman, commissioners. I'm Chris Kemfer. With me is Jay Brown. We are here on behalf of the applicants, both with regard to-
Mr. Kemfer, I apologize. Because of the difficulty of the way we're doing this, I failed to ask staffs for their report on item number 24. So I apologize.
No, no, that's fine.
Mr. Chairman, following our request for special use permits to allow retail establishment with accessory package liquor use within an existing retail store at 300 Fremont Street, known as Fabulous Las Vegas Jeweling Gifts, and within a convenience store located at 316 Fremont Street, known as The Coyote, as well as special use permit for proposed beer/wine cooler off-sale use within an existing retail establishment at 21 Fremont Street, known as Viva Vegas Fremo. The proposed use is conform to the minimum special use permit requirements and is compatible with the surrounding commercial uses. Therefore, staff recommends approval. Please note that an additional letter of support has been received after the publishing in regards to item number 25. Thank you.
Thank you. And now, Mr. Kemfer will proceed.
That's fine. Thank you very much, and I thank staff. The application, as you know and just heard, has the support of staff and was put on your one-motion, one-vote portion of your agenda. It was there for a reason, because the use that we're requesting is not only not prohibited on this site, but the exact same use has been approved at other similar locations for the same type of businesses in the same area. Now ultimately, when you sit as the zoning board, you make a determination from both a legal and a fairness standpoint as to what is an appropriate land use. And it's a fundamental fairness principle of land use that similar properties have to be similarly treated respectfully. It is arbitrary to do otherwise. If packaged liquor is not to be served on Fremont Street or is to be limited on Fremont Street, then you and the city council have a right to address that issue, much the same way that you've addressed issues with distance requirements for taverns or for convenience markets or whatever it might be. You have that ability. But what is before you tonight is whether or not this particular land use is appropriate when you consider the area and you consider other uses in that area. Staff has already made the determination in its report, and I know you've read it, where it says it is compatible with other uses that are there. Consequently, it is not right, and it's not fair, to say that this business can sell packaged liquor and this business can sell it, but the one right next to it can't and the one right across the street from it cannot. As will be argued, there are issues that, and have been argued, that present themselves with regard to the number of locations or the sale of liquor itself on Fremont Street. I'm not suggesting that there aren't important issues, but I find it interesting that all of these things that are being talked about are things that presently exist without our clients even participating in. So in order for you to find that there has to be some exacerbation of these existing problems, you do have to reach the conclusion that Ms. Murphy raised but did not address, is the selling of liquor at different locations, does that expand the number of people who buy liquor? Does it expand the amount of liquor that those people purchase? Or is it a case that the same number of people will buy the same amount of liquor but just from different locations? And that is what we find, that is what we believe to be true, is that people are not attracted to a particular location because it, our Fremont Street, because it has more liquor stores. This is not a case, and you could make an argument, that perhaps, you know, adding more stores might be a problem if the existing stores closed down, or if they put a sign out that said, "Sorry, go home. We are out of packaged liquor." That doesn't happen. They are, there is more than enough liquor on Fremont Street for the people who are there. It's just where they get it, and that's where the land use consideration comes into play. It simply is not right, fair, or legal to permit somebody to buy a beer here or at this location, or at the bar in front of the D, or wherever it might be, but then say, "You can't do it." These issues that we're talking about are issues that should have been and still can be addressed globally when the first application came up. But once two or three of these applications are approved, it is very hard from a legal standpoint to say, "We're going to shut the door." And you heard issues that were raised that have to be addressed. Our guys, having packaged liquor and popping a beer and drinking it, that's against the law. I don't believe we can't enforce the law. If people are breaking the law, enforce the law. But don't say what we're going to do is allow these situations to continue, but just in a more limited number of places, and we're not going to give somebody else the right that we gave this particular or these particular businesses. We talk about the homeless. I've even heard it saying, and you never, ever want to minimize or trivialize the homeless issue. And I've heard it said, though, that the homeless will be drawn to this place because there will be more liquor sales. I can assure you that the homeless do not read the paper and say, "Oh, boy, they're opening more liquor stores at Fremont Street. Let's move there." There are issues and problems, but address those the way they should be addressed. Address them by finding solutions to the problems. You don't, I've never heard of Four Loko, but if you don't like Four Loko, and I think it's insane to sell it, then prohibit it. Other communities do that. Prohibit the sale of certain alcoholic beverages. Do it. If you don't like a certain number of, you don't want 12-packs sold, prohibit it. If there's things you want to do to address issues that you have now, address them. But this ultimately has to be a zoning board and looking at a land use and saying, "With regard to that land use, is this an appropriate location?" Staff has says it is. "Are there other businesses similar to it?" There clearly are. So what is my justification for saying I cannot approve something that was approved for others? And specifically with regard to section 25, or application number 25 on your agenda, that particular item was approved by the staff, the planning commission, and the city council. It just expired. And then the next time it was filed, it was withdrawn, but it had been approved and expired. So this concern that we're voicing now didn't exist in the minds of this planning commissioner or the city council the last time it was here. So what we're respectfully suggesting is approve what's before you today. I can only speak for items 24 and 25. We're respectfully asking that you approve those. But then give direction that you want to address all of these issues that are legitimate, fair, important issues, but let's address them globally and not just pick out those people to whom they apply and to whom they don't. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Kemfer. Before you leave the podium, though, your comments, then, you're representing the applicant on both 24 and 25?
Yes, sir.
And so they apply to both?
And I will not need to say anything else.
Okay, thank you. And right now, I'll open this matter up for public comment on item number 24. Does anybody wish to be heard who hasn't already been heard and applied their comments globally?
I'd like to add that I'm 1415 South Arville.
Sir, you need to come back to the podium, state your name, address, and speak in the microphone.
I'm 1415 South Arville.
I, we're here with a special permit issue, and I, my understanding, and I could be corrected, is special permit, you come because the facility doesn't necessarily warrant that type of business. That's why we have a special permit. It's a privileged permit. It's not a right. And you guys tonight have an opportunity to say, hey, you know, enough is enough. Let's look and see how we can, at minimum, enforce the laws that are there. Again, the special, I believe that the special permit allows you guys to say yes or no. You don't have an obligation to say yes because six other people are able to sell single-serve or packaged liquor. That's what that permit process is for. Staff recommended a tattoo parlor at Allure. You guys turned it down tonight. That's your, that's your right as commissioners. And I would ask that you turn this down and let's, let's put a stop to this packaged liquor stuff. Thank you.
Thank you, sir. Does anybody else wish to be heard on item number 24? Seeing none, I'll close the public comment portion on item number 24. Going to item number 25. Steph, we could have a report on this one?
I'll be able to report.
Oh, okay. Well, see, reports. And we've heard from the applicant. Does any, I'm going to open this up now for public comment. Does anybody wish to make comments on item Seeing none, I'll close the public comment portion to item number 25. Move on to item number 26. Steph, if we could have a report, please? Is it for, you got us all the way through 26. Okay, at this time, I'd like to hear from the applicant on item number 26.
Good evening again. Amanda Litt from Rand Law Firm, located at 630 South Fore Street. I also represent Arrelne on the other, I believe, is item number 23. I just kind of want to address both locations at this time, since I didn't really get to address the comments that were made earlier. And I respect those comments that were made, and I work downtown, and I spend a considerable amount down there, eating and going to the hotels and all the rest of it. However, I think it's a stretch. I mean, I, you know, work in criminal law as well. I understand all the violence that's going on and everything. I think it's a stretch to correlate that with selling alcohol inside of a hotel, casino. Item number 23 and this item both are gift shops. They are all over Las Vegas. Again, Arrelne owns a number of gift shops. Many of them serve, I mean, excuse me, sell packaged liquor, beer and wine as well. And it doesn't change the situation at all. It's just adding another person to it. If you can walk to any bar, anything, I mean, they ID you. We do the same at all our gift shops. Just like with any other privileged license with alcohol, they have to have a key employee, and that key employee is trained on to ID, and they manage, manage all the sales that go on in these locations. And again, this is a zoning issue, and I, I understand all the issues with alcohol and drinking and people on the streets and all that, but downtown is Fremont Street. It's an experience. It's a, Las Vegas is a fun place. We attract a lot of tourists, and partying and selling alcohol is kind of part of the appeal for many people. And I don't think that going into a novelty store to buy liquor, being adult, being carded, and going up to your room to drink alcohol really should be as serious as an issue as underage drinking, which is, you know, a whole other problem. So with that, I respectfully request that these are zoned and special use permit granted.
Thank you. And I'm going to open this up for public comment, and then as I open it up for public comment, it's important to note that on item 26, it's just beer/wine cooler off-sale. It's not liquor. So does anybody have any specific comments on item 26? So, does anybody have any specific comments on item 26? Sir, if you'll state your name and address, please?
My name is Mark Brandonberg, my business address is 1 Fremont Street, Golden Gate Casino. I, I do want to emphasize the concerns about the safety issue, which I really think that even the applicants of knowledge exist here. And, and what I want to emphasize is, I, I think this has been a problem from the start, as Mr. Victor indicated, going back to ABC, but more particularly, we've seen changes recently. We've seen more happening on Fremont Street, right in the midst of this economic boom that we're seeing downtown, this redevelopment, and all these positive things we're seeing happening, all of a sudden we find this negative development. We're seeing safety issues that are very real, very concerning. And one of the arguments that we've got is, "Well, look, we've already got the problem here, this might not be the right way to fix it. If we already have other competitors down there, other, other stores selling this product, what's the problem of having a few more?" I don't think that that's an appropriate way to look at this. If you think that there is a very real safety issue here, and there is, then I think we need to say to ourselves, is this an opportunity to put on the brakes, to say, "What's going on?" Do we wanna aggravate a problem? We're seeing these things happening down here on First Friday, you've had testimony here about very real issues with, with, with criminal elements, and, and the safety that that's putting, or putting to the public. My request would be to say, "Look, is there a real problem? If you think there's a real problem, I would ask that you give yourselves the time, if you don't think, as Mr. Kemper suggested, if you don't think that you have enough information in front of you, let's go to Metro, let's get more testimony along the lines that you've already heard here about what they see out on Fremont East, what's going on in the side streets, what's going on with, with the owner of Rachel's Kitchen, the things that she's seen outside her front door. These are real problems. This is an opportunity to say, "We have a problem, let's address it," rather than say, "Let's punt, we've already let some other people do it, so what's the big deal if it gets worse?" It is getting worse, and it's important that something be done now. If you don't feel you need to, you know enough, this came fairly quickly for a lot of us. If you'd like to get more information, I'd ask that you give the community an opportunity to tell you more. I would ask that you go to Metro, because I have heard comments from Metro, I've heard comments from Metro officers specifically about these packaged liquor sales. They think it's a problem. It is a real problem, and I would appreciate your consideration in looking at this as an opportunity to do something positive towards addressing this problem. Thank you.
Thank you. Does anybody else wish to be heard on items 23 through 26? Sir, if you'll state your name and address, please?
For the record, Brian O'Callahan with Las Vegas Metropolitan Police Department. I'm here to state everything that Ms. Murphy had stated, and also, any questions that you need from me. I'm not gonna argue what Mr. Kemper had stated. That's why we didn't wanna come up here and voice those, because this is a zoning, this is for licensing, but we do have a problem down there. And for more information, or Captain, he's not here, but he can be, bring more information to you if you need further.
Thank you, sir. Anybody else wish to be heard? Seeing none, I'll close the public comment portion, open it up for discussion amongst the board.
Yes, Chairman, through you. I mean, maybe this is the right thing, to hold this for 30 days so we can figure it out. I mean, I've gone back and forth so many times on this issue. We've let the gates out. Every kiosk downtown, every casino, every store within a casino has a right to sell liquor and beer. A lot of the recent issues that we've seen on Fremont East, maybe I don't know all the issues, but I hear a lot of these issues are stemming from shutting down Fremont Street and letting people gather, and big crowds gather on that district from Las Vegas Boulevard down to Sixth Street. And we, we'll get 500, 600 people down there. And when you have that many people gathering, you're gonna have issues with the liquor or without the liquor. I've spent quite a bit of time up and down Fremont East, and I see the footballs, which are equivalent to probably six beers, around the downtown cocktail room, The Griffin, all the way up to Sixth Street. Why is this not an issue, having footballs filled full of beer in, in other areas? So, I don't know, I have a real problem. I, I can't figure out how come the packaged liquor is an issue, but all the other places that are selling liquor up and down Fremont is not an issue? I'm not sure if I have enough information. Maybe we should hold this 30 days and let every one of these business owners come to me and explain why they feel that this is a bigger issue than what they're contributing to themselves.
Thank you, Commissioner. Commissioner Truesdale?
I have several issues with this item, that, and holding it isn't gonna change my opinion on it at all. We, we hear now there's a problem with having 500 people on East Fremont Street. I remember the days when we couldn't get five people on East Fremont Street unless they were homeless. So, we, we don't like what's, when, when we get the people here, and we don't like it when we don't have the people here. It seems like we've created a model on Fremont Street that, and I see all my good friends out here tonight, I mean, I haven't seen this much of the property owners on Fremont Street down here in a long time. So it is an issue for everyone, but when you go into every one of the hotels, they have gift shops that sell packaged liquor. Most, most everyone I've been in downtown, everyone I've been in on the strip does. The only difference between them and the packaged liquor next door is usually the price tag, and the packaged liquor outside the hotel's usually cheaper. So that's not an argument, it's not an economic argument for this. But when we say people can buy a 12-pack and give a beer to their friends, or, or give it to underage drinking, you can stand on Fremont Street and you can watch two parents buy drinks at, at a walk-up bar and hand one to their kid, if they want to. Policing this is an issue, not, not a prohibition here. We have looked at these here, we had a problem with 7-Eleven, and everybody encouraged them to go away. And they went away. And then everybody goes, "Well, God, why is that store vacant there? Why is, why is it such a dead corner? Now it's, something's being built there." Well, 7-Eleven goes up the, up the block to a property owner that's part of redeveloping downtown, and they, and they came in and they got approved for packaged liquor. There's no consistent view, in my mind, from all of the property owners on, it's okay for my liquor to be sold 'cause I have DRAM cards, that's good, but it's not okay for a equally privileged licensed person that has the same potential risks as they have multiple locations. You lose one license, you start to lose them all if you, if the city enforces its rules correctly. So, if this is an enforcement issue, let's enforce the laws we have on the book. You can't tell me that having, we've gone from 18 million people downtown, or whatever the number is, Mr. Victor would know it better than, than anyone else, to maybe 500,000 more because we're seeing this economic boom, well, all those 500,000 people additional aren't the ones filling the liquor stores and, and going out and stabbing everybody, or, or drinking liquor that's twice the alcohol of, of something else. So, this may be a greater issue, but we have approved so many land uses, the city has been very pro, and every consultant in the room here has represented clients that have been pro liquor around this valley. And now we have a concentration of it that doesn't work? Tamping the break here sends a horrible message. All you have to do is say, "We have all these bad things, don't come downtown." That is not the message that Downtown Alliance wants to get out there. I, I, I'm sure that's not the message Mr. Victor wants to get out there, 'cause he's, they're spending a lot on advertising, promoting concerts, and promoting all these, these summer events down here. But there are problems on Fremont Street. They aren't at the doorstep, every one of them are not at the doorstep of Mr. Brown's client, Mr. Kemper's client, and the young lady's client, I'm sorry. But we have a land use issue here that we have to go, this is a privilege, a special use. Is there a reason that we don't want this special use? Is it a bad operator? Is it, they, they don't follow the codes in their other locations? They, we don't think it's appropriate next to a church or next to a school. I find it very hard to say, drinking out of a beer can that you bought in a package store, drinking out of a, a fancy-shaped aluminum can that you got at one of the major hotels creates a different kind of drunk. I mean, if you have, if you have people overindulge, we're, we're promoting a younger lifestyle downtown, and if we're not gonna police that, then we are gonna have these problems. But, as Mr. Kemper put it, his clients aren't part of any problem that's currently here. If, if they are, and, and if whoever's gonna be the ultimate operator is, that's a business licensing question, it's not a land use question. It's, it's, we need to look at, is this appropriate next to, like, businesses in an entertainment venue? If you ask me, I'd love to see a lot of changes on Fremont Street with a lot of great restaurants and a lot of great retailers. But nobody so far is, is, been willing to, to push that to the edge and, and create space for that. We, we've taken most of the carts, which, which bring their own different success or issues to downtown. But these liquor, or these convenience stores, the one that's in, and there is some differences here. The one that's in the Las Vegas Club is right up on the street. It's, it's right in your face, okay? And that, that is potentially a question mark. The other ones that, that Mr. Brown and Mr. Kemper's clients, they're very deep stores, they're almost 120-feet-deep stores, and the, the liquor sales area is in the very back of that. That is dramatically different than even some of the other existing liquor sales on Fremont Street. So, if we're gonna talk about those kind of specifics that deal with how the land use is gonna be put, I think those are reasonable questions. But there's not a compatibility issue here, and unless somebody says they're gonna do away with a bunch of the existing businesses, it's not a saturation issue. 'Cause there's plenty down here now if people wanna get, wanna drink. I think we have problems on Fremont Street with the street performers, I was down there a week ago, or two weeks ago for an event, and there's some lady standing out there taking pictures, she's, she's got no top on. I don't know who, who's, who should be policing that? Is it Fremont Street Experience, or is it Metro? But that can't be good for tourism. And, I mean, it wasn't good for me, I, it was not pretty. It was, it was pretty brutal. But we, we've moved all our bars downtown, out to the street, to create a different part of our experience down there. Down on East Fremont, we've created these bars with kinda hipster deal, rooftop this and that. And they're bringing people down here. These four businesses aren't gonna tip the barrel, our, how we enforce our businesses, I believe is gonna tip the barrel. Thank you.
Thank you, Commissioner. Commissioner Goines?
Yeah, just a couple of comments. I, kinda like Commissioner Schlotzman, but I don't think we should hold this, but I do think, I think this is a people problem. I mean, God, I wish Captain, or retired Curtis would come over to Goines and H Street and, and preach that preach in front of, that market in the middle of the hood about Four Loko and Steel Reserve and all those other things that, that, that sell over there. But I think this is a people problem. And I know, deep in Ward Five, a couple of years ago, we had an issue, something like this, that was proliferated with the little, with the little crack vials, the little flowers that were sold in every store, and it be, and it took off just like this. And I'm proud to say now that the reason we got control of that is, is, as opposed to shutting all the stores down and say, "You, you've gotta shut your doors," is we got together with Metropolitan Police Department and policed it. And I, I'm proud to say, over in 89106 and, and Ward Five, we don't even have a murder this year. But that's what it takes. This is a people problem. I mean, it's, it's not fair to assess the business owner for what people are doing up and down Fremont Street. And you have to look at it this way, the Fremont Street East, every business down there has come in and wants a liquor license of some sort. And so if it's anywhere that it is to be, this would be the corridor to, to, for that to be. And one thing I see that's a little, that I don't, I didn't hear anybody else bring up, is, is a couple of these places have restricted the square footage of where this liquor can be placed. I think, Mr. Kemper, I don't know if you speak to, I think in one of your applicants, only 243 square feet where that's gonna be displayed, and one of the others, it's gonna be only 100 square feet. I know that Ms. Murphy put up a photo of, of liquor that looks like it's well beyond that, but I think when we talk about, how do we police that, what do we do in those discussions, maybe that's what we have to look at, limiting the amount of space where it can go and, and things like that. But I'm not supporting not allowing a business to have it, because I think that business has a right, and I don't think we can selectively say, "You can sell packaged liquor and you can't." Those are my comments.
Thank you, Commissioner Goines. Commissioner Moody?
Thank you, Mr. Chair. Mr. Kemper made the comment tonight that similar properties must be similarly treated, and while I agree that that's true, I think with each establishment that gains this type of, of permit, it becomes more and more dissimilar for an additional establishment to, to, to get that, that permit. And, and therefore, I don't think they are similar properties. I, I believe it is a saturation issue. We frequently, when determining land use issues, we're looking at issues like proximity and about saturation, because we want to limit the number of certain types of establishments in certain areas. And I think we have reached that saturation point. I'm afraid we're going to turn the Fremont Street Experience into the Fremont Street Alcohol Experience, or the Fremont Street Liquor Experience, and, so that my decision's not arbitrary and capricious if we do vote on this tonight, my vote will be for denial on all of those.
Thank you, Commissioner. Commissioner Bonner?
Thank you, Chair. This is a zoning board, there's no doubt this is a zoning board, but really, I think it's much more than that, and I think we're under the, the guise of planning. So there's some planning that has to go on, in addition to making occasional judgments about fairness. Planning, I, I see actually, the council, of course, but hopefully with some guidance from the planning commission and planning staff, about some sensible and sensitive planning. And I actually think of us as guardians of our CBD, our downtown, the Fremont Street. And we have to be cautious about certain actions that we take in, in an area like that. I, I thought for a minute, while all this was going on, about distance separation, we have certain uses where we have to have a minimum distance, we seem to waive that rather willy-nilly, but I thought if it were to be these packaged liquor stores, you might have a, a distance based on stumbling. You know, you couldn't, couldn't make it the next one without falling down first or something. And that, that kinda got silly, of course. But I think we are talking about a health and safety issue, and I, I base both of, most of my thinking down on health and safety. And I think we have a health and a safety problem with what's going on. How do we deal with it? I don't know. Will more time give us a, a staff recommendation on how to deal with it in concert with, with Metro and, and with the experience? Maybe so. Maybe there needs to be not only a formal surveillance, a monitored surveillance, and a an action from the surveillance, so that we can actually cut out the bad things we know are going on. And in fact, if Moretime would do that, I'd lean toward giving Moretime to talk about a surveillance and an action surveillance to take care of the existing problems before adding more packaged liquor stores as a potential. That's enough said. Thank you.
Thank you, Commissioner. I have a couple of comments myself. I've heard some very compelling arguments tonight on both sides. And, you know, I've heard the danger issue. I've heard the land use issue. And as I, I've been, you know, I'll have to admit, I've been going back and forth in my mind on this like a tennis match tonight. But I think what Commissioner Goines said a little while ago, I think is probably the most pertinent thing I've heard all night. And this, this is a people issue. And I'm hearing, you know, Ms. Murphy and Mr. Brandenburg and, and everybody that was speaking against this. And, and, you know, they make a good case, and they're right to an extent, but they're wrong to an extent. And I'll just kind of point out why, why I think they're wrong to an extent is because, as Commissioner Goines said, it's a people issue. First of all, what we're doing, what I've heard from the argument, we're holding the new applicants here tonight accountable for bad acts of other, you know, so-called bad acts of other businesses. And I don't think that's a correct thing to do it. And the only time I see when we do that is we've had instances where a store comes in, they've been selling beer and wine, and they want to expand into liquor. And then we get a report that they haven't been policing their parking lots, they haven't been doing a good job of keeping people from consuming the beverage on premise. And so with that said, I don't think we find ourselves in that situation tonight, because these are new applicants. We haven't heard anything that said that these applicants have not been policing their business. The other thing I heard tonight is, you know, and it's true, bartenders have TAMs cards, and they're supposed to recognize people that are getting too intoxicated, try to cut them off or do whatever it takes. That happens in a lot of cases, a lot of cases it doesn't. But let's be realistic. They get cut off at the bar, they're going to go to the gift shop and get another bit of packaged liquor. And that's a problem you've got to deal with. And so I could go on and on, back and forth on this. But the bottom line is, it really becomes an enforcement issue, you know, law enforcement issue, or do we have enough police officers down there keeping these things from happening or the like? My thought on this, again, it is a land use issue. Our staff has vetted this. True, as the one gentleman pointed out, we will go with staff sometimes. We go against staff sometimes. But in this case, there's no distance issues. There's no, you know, I, I know Commissioner Moody said it's a saturation issue. This is downtown Las Vegas, and, you know, it's expected to, you know, to be able to purchase beverages, to go in and enjoy the gaming and the like. I don't think, or me, personally, I think the market will take care of a lot of this. You know, you worry about oversaturation of liquor stores. After a while, it's just not profitable to put a new liquor store in there. And, you know, I might be kissing the tooth fairy in that, in those statements, but I believe the market eventually will level that out. But the bottom line on this, again, it's a people issue versus a land use issue. With all due respect, I thought your presentation was great tonight, Ms. Murphy and everything. And I found a lot of your arguments compelling, but I find that our job as a zoning board, I'm going to support these applications. Now, being mindful, we're going to be voting on these applications on an individual basis. So with that said, I'm going to look to my...
If I can just make a couple of comments before we have a motion. Mr. Chair, if I could just make a couple of comments before we have a motion. Because we have taken these items in kind of an unusual fashion, I just want to point out a couple of things. Number one is that these are four separate and distinct applications, and they are all slightly different. Item number 23 is a request for a packaged liquor store. Item number 24 is for accessory packaged liquor, which is not the same as a packaged liquor store. Item 24 is requesting 243 square feet of liquor sales as part of an overall store. So it's accessory to the principal use. Item number 25 also is accessory packaged liquor and is requesting 100 square feet within a 4,400 square foot store. And then item number 26 is not selling packaged liquor, but rather is a request for beer/wine cooler. So I just want to make sure that it's clear in the minds of the Planning Commission members and also in the members of the public and those who have offered testimony that we do have four distinct applications before us, and your deliberations need to be distinct to each of those individual cases. Also, as you make a motion on each of these cases, I would just ask that you make a finding relative to your decision, based on the staff report that has been given to you and the testimony that has been taken here this evening. In terms of the testimony and the things that you consider, going back to Title 1916 of our Code of Ordinances relative to the approval of special use permits, there are a number of determinations that you must make. Number one is relative to the use being harmonious and compatible with the surrounding uses. Number two is that the site is suitable for the proposed use. Number three is relative to the accessibility of the site. And number four is relative to issues of public health, safety, and welfare. So those are the determinations that you consider in making your recommendation, making your recommendation on these items this evening. One other thing I would just add to this is that all four of these items are scheduled to go forward to City Council. So if that has any impact on your deliberations for whether or not you're going to hold these in abeyance, please realize that there will be additional consideration given to these applications before City Council. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Director. We'll begin with item number 23. Is there any further discussion by the commissioners on item number 23?
Yes, Chair. If a motion's made for approval, for it to see my support, I would like to see that no minis or the small packaged liquors, such as the minors, could stick into their pocket and hide. If it was the larger bottles, I wouldn't have a problem, but minis or the smaller packages, I would have an issue with.
Steady attorney.
I think we all know what minis are. And I think you probably could, based on the record that you made, that they're more accessible to minors, more easily hideable. We could, we could probably prohibit that. I don't know what the other category beyond miniatures is. You could say those that are, you know, less than an ounce or an ounce or less would be prohibited. I think that's what a miniature is. But beyond that, I think we have to define it more particularly.
Commissioner Goines?
I'm ready to offer up a motion.
Okay, and then you're ready to put the findings with that motion?
Well, I'm gonna, I, I don't think we know. You know, I don't, I don't think we have proof that we know that it's, it's minors and, and things like that. So I'm willing to put, to put, put the offer up as the applicant requested. But like I said, again, you know, it, it goes back to the people. And I just want to give some kudos out to Captain Burns from the Bolden Area Command Center, who, that crew over there knows how to police a neighborhood. And so a lot of the stuff that we dealt with in the inner portion around our stores has been mitigated. And it's, and it's, and it's the police that have come in and sat down in the neighborhood and have come in there and make their presence known. If I'm a business owner and I have a liquor store down there, I, I may put a guy named Buford out in front with, with a big stick that, that will discourage you from taking your 12-pack and drinking it on, on the side of my store. Much like when you go down Fremont Street now in front of Insert Coins and places like that, you have the, the street side, I call them ushers, that police what goes on in front of that business. And I've seen them dissuade those that are librieted from coming in because you had too much drink. I've seen them take the half-empty bottle out of somebody's hand and put it in the trash. So I don't think, I need to restrict the minis that are, that are being sold in the store. I don't think that, that gets to the root of the problem. So with that, I'll make a motion for approval of item 23.
Commissioner Goines, before you make your, your motion, would you add to your motion a one-year review?
Sure, I have no problem with that. I'll move for approval of item 23, SUP 49539, subject to all staff's recommendations and conditions, and Director Flynn.
In terms of the one-year review, if you would just clarify if this is to be an administrative review or a public hearing?
Due to the height of this, I'd like to bring it back as, as a public hearing. I think it'll be a good chance for us to, to look back 12 months and actually see what's going on and give us some good, good data. And that's my motion.
And one additional thing is that from the issuance of the liquor license or from the action taken today for the one year?
Issuance. Issuance of the, of the license.
It is 3-3. The motion fails.
Mr. Chairman, with the recommendation of denial from the Planning Commission, this item will still go forward to the August 21 City Council meeting.
Okay, going on now to item 24. Is there any further discussion on item 24 amongst the commission? Saying none, I'll entertain a similar motion.
Mr. Chairman, I'll move for approval of item 24, SUP 49540, subject to all staff's recommendations and conditions. And keep in mind, this is only 243 square feet.
Thank you, Commissioner. Please post. We have a 3-3 tie. Motion fails.
And again, this item will go forward to the August 21 City Council meeting.
We'll move on now to item 25. Is there any further discussion amongst the commissioners? Saying none, I'll entertain a motion.
Item 25, move for approval of SUP 49543, subject to all staff's recommendations and conditions.
Please post. Again, it's 3-3 tie. Motion fails.
And this item goes forward to the August 21 City Council meeting.
Moving on to item 26. Is there any discussion amongst the commissioners? Saying none, I'll entertain a motion.
Yes, Chair. On item number 26, SUP 49574, for proposed beer/wine cooler off sale establishment, considering that this is beer/wine cooler only, and I'm not concerned with anyone pocketing the minis and hiding those on the street, I would follow staff's recommendations for approval.
Thank you, Commissioner. Please post. Motion carries.
And, Mr. Chairman, that item goes forward to the August 21 City Council meeting.
Much for consideration of an important item. So thank you all for your time.
Thank you. Good night. We're going to go ahead and take a short break, and we'll, we'll be out of session for a while.[1450.15] Okay, we're gonna go ahead and get started again. We're gonna start with, we're going to the public hearing items. And we're gonna start with item number 30, which is re-notification variants 47494, the applicant owner is William Berthistle, for possible action on a request for a variance to allow an existing accessory structure, class two, to be located in the front yard where such is not permitted, to allow a zero-foot separation where a six-foot separation is required for an existing accessory structure, class two, and to allow setbacks of nine feet in the front yard and zero feet in the side yards where 20 feet and five feet are required, respectively at 1243 Bernard Drive in Ward 1, Councilwoman Tarkanian. Staff is recommending denial. Staff, may we have a report, please?
Mr. Chairman, this application is before you as a result of a code enforcement action pertaining to the existing carport within the front yard being constructed by the applicant without permits. Upon further review of the site, it was found that another accessory structure consisting of laundry room as well as a patio cover were also constructed without permits, all of which failed to meet the required setbacks. As such, the requested variance is preferential in nature as the applicant has created self-imposed hardship upon themselves, which could have been mitigated by means of permit review. Therefore, staff is recommending denial of the application. Please note that additional letters of protest and support have been received after the publishing. Thank you.
Thank you, I'd like to hear from the applicant, and sir, if you'll state your name and address, please?
It's William Berthistle, 1243 Bernard Drive. I am the property owner. I've resided there for 25 years. I would like to say something here quick before I start into the rest. 25 years ago when I bought this property, it was a property. It was a rental for approximately 10 to 15 years before I bought it with an out-of-state owner. The homes originally in this neighborhood were built for low-income families, and here I am, 40 years later. Two young children, a property that is beat up, the true testament of a fixer-upper special. I made mistakes, but I tried to create a safe environment for my two children and bring them up in an affordable way. I've submitted the floor plans of the house according to the last time I was here. I made a revision in them to try and meet the five-foot setback for the laundry auxiliary building. I've worked with staff, I filed for another variance to allow that zero foot between buildings. For the most part, my intent and my mistakes and bad judgment through the years was to create a better home for my family and... The request for the denial, that's code enforcement, which I haven't participated in. Do I have regrets? I sure do. Because now, we're not talking about a property at 1243 Bernard Drive, we're talking about a home. My last struggle, that I was here, I tried to show that there were existing structures in the neighborhood comparable to mine. Two rights don't make a wrong, or two wrongs don't make a right. I buy into that 100 percent. But I also believe that these structures that are common to my neighborhood, some of them had to come through here, through the code department, through the variance procedure, to allow this. Since this has happened, I've removed some of the sunscreen around the auxiliary building, and a portion of the, would be south awning, and the existence of this to my home, the front carport, I spent extra money to beautify it with the corporal ends. My five most impacted neighbors, both to the north and the south, and the three across the street, have signed statements, but this is all relevant. We have code violations here. If Commissioner Gwynn, who isn't here tonight, brought forth the motion last time to go ahead with the permits, I'm here to straighten out my property, my home. The financial problems that are created by me were created by me, but they were in a different situation. Now, I'm here to correct those if possible. Thank you.
Thank you, sir. I would like to now open this matter up for public comment. Does anybody wish to be heard? Seeing none, I'll close the public comment portion, open it up for discussion amongst the commissioners. discussion amongst the commission. Commissioner Goines?
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. Um, William, um, Commissioner Quinn offers her sentiment to you. Um, um, she asked me to steward this for her because she's not here tonight, and so I was able to ride, um, through your neighborhood today. I don't, I saw somebody there, but that was me out in front of the, going up and down your street in a truck. But, um, I, I think you're absolutely right. I think you took, um, a piece of property and, and, and turned it into a home. I didn't have too much of a reservation with, with your carport. I think it, it, it's not an eyesore. Uh, I think it actually is, is, is a compliment out there. Um, I, I'm gonna support your request, but I want to know that, have you read the conditions and are, are you okay with the conditions on this application? And, and number two is the condition that reads, "All necessary building, uh, permits shall be obtained and final inspection shall be completed in compliance with Title Nineteen and all codes required by the Department of Building and Safety." So, um, that's what...
That's, that is what I'm after, Commissioner.
Okay.
I agree with that.
Okay, and those are my comments.
Does anybody else wish to speak? Commissioner Bonner?
Um, I'm, I'm gonna take the parking structure one step farther. It's a very nice one, plus the homework you did on everybody else, uh, in must have been a mile radius that has done the same or similar thing. Says to me that we, we actually have missed something as a staff, trying to find a way to make those things more allowable, maybe even legal in some way. So, I'm, I'm actually gonna throw that as a challenge to the staff because there are so many of them around, uh, in your neighborhood and in surrounding neighborhoods that need that protection from the sun. I would've done the same thing. The only difference I would've done is I'd have made sure it's done, um, completely out of non-combustible material. Uh, once upon a time, thank goodness this was in the county, I was made to take a steel structure down that didn't get approval. They wouldn't let me go through it like we're letting you go through it, but, uh, they made me take it down, and it was not combustible whatsoever. But, for the, to the extent that those structures, yours and your neighbors' that can be legalized, I would suggest we find a way to do that. The other part of that is, even if your neighbors on both sides have said, "Yes, it's okay," if there's anything, if there's a fire safety issue, um, first of all, I hope that wouldn't get a, a building permit to, to be closed in and completed, but if there's any, uh, retroactive outfitting you need to do to take it from a combustible state and leave it in its shed condition, uh, I'd find a way to do that because they, they shouldn't be willing to waive their, their liability like that, uh, on something that could be leading to a fire. That's all I have.
Thank you, Commissioner. Anybody else?
Yes, Chairman. Uh, the, the application before us includes the carport in the front and the back where storage where the boat is. Is that correct?
Cool.
You know, I, I have no problem with the carport in the front, but that, um, for this, to see my support, that lean-to shed that's attached to the fascia of your house and supported on a block wall, which is a screen wall and probably was never intended for that purpose, it just looks bad and it would look bad from your neighbors, a butt in your house, um, and every bit of the water from your house is draining into your neighbor's yard, and if this was my house, I wouldn't be too appreciative of that. So, if the motion was to take down the rear one, I would be in support of this, allowing you to keep the front butt.
May I, may I reply to that?
No, sir. Anybody else wish to be heard?
I'd like to hear your response.
All right, just a moment. Okay, uh, go ahead, if you wanna respond.
Uh, what, uh, the, the rear awning that we're talking about here with the fascia is towards the alley port, rear portion of the home. It is a manufactured aluminum awning. The fascia that is supported on the block wall is a typical, uh, gutter type where the, the water, and it is on, uh, the floor plan there, that, that is, uh, drainage to my side. In other words, the, the fascia that's on my, on the block wall to my property's side has rain control off that awning to my home, or to my side of the property. Uh, the fascia is a typical alumina, manufactured aluminum fascia that is painted in with, uh, the same color as all my, uh, fascia throughout the home.
Thank you. Does anybody else wish to be heard?
A quick comment, Mr. Chair. Um, when you were here last time, I think my comment was, um, if this was going to be held, I'd like to see if there was some type of compromise, and I, I really haven't seen a compromise from you. It looks like you want everything to, to remain as-is, and, uh, I, I, I have to agree with Commissioner Schlotman that if I were going to support this, I, I'd have to see some, uh, at least a few of these changed. I, I don't like the, the carport as much as everybody else, but I can live with it. Uh, some of these other things, like the, the roofing meeting the wall, I, I just can't support, so, as-is, I'm, I'm sorry, but I can't support it.
Well, would there be a better way to support that?
Uh, excuse me, sir. Uh, anybody else wish to be heard on the commission? I'll entertain a motion.
Mr. Chairman, uh, Mr. Chairman, on item thirty, I'm gonna move for approval of VAR four-seven-four-nine-four, subject to all staff's recommendation and condition.
Please post. Motion carries.
Mr. Chair, this item will go forward to the August twenty-first city council meeting.
Okay, thank you very much, Commissioners.
You're welcome.
Going on to now items thirty-one and related item thirty-two, beginning with item thirty-one, VAR four-nine-one-three-seven, the applicant owner BLV Holdings LLC, for possible action on a request for a variance to allow a fifty-two-foot residential adjacency setback where eighty-one feet is required at thirty-one-twenty-one West Sahara Avenue in Ward-one, Councilwoman Tarkanian. Staff is recommending approval. SDR four-nine-one-three-six, for possible action on a request for a site development plan review for a proposed thirty-three-foot-tall two-story, four-thousand-eight-hundred-seventy-one-square-foot office and retail building with a waiver to allow a three-foot-wide landscape buffer along the interior property, property lines where eight feet is required in Ward-one, Councilwoman Tarkanian. Staff is recommending approval. Staff, can we have the report, please?
Mr. Chairman, the applicant has worked closely with city staff to present a feasible commercial development for the property located within Area Two of the redevelopment plan. Where this proposal has, has not met the strict application of the Title Nineteen Unified Development Code, the applicant has utilized design proposal that offsets any impact that the commercial development may have on the adjacent residential properties to the south. For this person's, for this reason, staff recommends approval of the requested variance and site development plan review and its associated waiver and exceptions. Please note that an additional letter of protest has been received after the publishing. Thank you.
Thank you. If we could hear from the applicant, please, and state your name and address.
Good evening, Commissioners. Amanda Litt from Moran Law from six-three-zero South Fourth Street, representing the applicant.
Okay. Sir?
Good evening, uh, Chairman and the Commission. Um, my name is Ravi Nathan, and I'm at one-zero-one-seven-seven O.C. Cat Avenue, Las Vegas, eight-nine-one-six-six. I also represent the client, and, um, I am here to thank you for the planning commission, for planning department for cooperating with us and the public works to get this being moving, and, um, uh, happy with the conditions of approval. Uh, only thing remaining is, um, uh, the, according to the conditions of approval, we need to remove two windows at the rear side of the property, uh, which the clients wants to have that because of certain reasons. Uh, if you can consider that, that is fine, uh, and she has the reasons for that, to support that request.
Regarding the conditions of approval, number ten, um, reflects the removal of the windows of second story facing the south.
I'm sorry, we can't hear you.
I'm sorry. Um, condition number ten on the approval recommends removal of the windows on the upper level on facing the south side, which faces a residential area. At this time, we're requesting that that condition be eliminated due to there are a number of reasons. One is there's a parking lot on the south side of the building, and this is really going to be the only view of that parking lot for safety reasons. Additionally, we're gonna have a buffer, um, there's gonna be landscaping, and we have a landscaping plan that will really buffer any type of issue that the residents will have regarding looking into their homes even though they are quite a bit away, um, and/or, and/or looking into the facility. Additionally, um, for energy reasons, the other windows facing both directions are directly in the sun, and they'll have to be closed a lot of the time, and on the upper level, there's office space, and there's also some retail, and that potentially is gonna be our only windows for energy consumption to be used on the upper level.
Thank you. Now, we'll open this matter up for public comment. Does anybody wish to be heard on this matter? Seeing none, I'll close the public comment portion, open it up for discussion amongst the board. Commissioner Bonner?
Well, finally, I can use some of my past experience. Uh, when we had conditions like this, uh, where there was an opportunity to look in someone's private area, by the way, three-foot of landscaping is not gonna do much, so don't pull that over our eyes. What you can do, however, is put frosted glass or, or in some other form obscured the glass in the glazing portion of those windows, and I would recommend that as a, an alternative to keeping the windows and yet protecting the privacy of the neighbors.
Thank you. Anybody else? Seeing none, I'll entertain a motion.
Can I ask, before the motion is made, if the applicant will accept that modified condition of frosted windows as opposed to transparent?
I don't believe that would be an issue.
Ask for a corrective measure.
I, uh, sure, a condition can be frosted windows.
Thank you.
Yeah. Mr. Chairman, I'd move for approval, subject to all staff's conditions, including, uh, Commissioner Bonner's added con, condition that the windows be, um, obscured or...
Uh, can we use the word opaque, uh, for...
That was a part I was looking for.
Better technical terms for us, uh, pointy-headed planners, as Director Wheeler used to say.
Frosted doesn't work on your deal?
Uh, chocolate and strawberry are my favorites.
Oh, the windows would be of an opaque nature. How's that?
Please post. Motion carries. Next one, Commissioner Truesdale.
Uh, with regards to item thirty-two, I believe, right?
Yes.
Yeah, uh, move for staff's, move for approval, subject to all staff's conditions.
And just to clarify for the clerk, that would be, uh, the condition change you read would be, uh, to change condition number ten of, uh, SDR four-nine-one-three-six, is where that condition change will occur.
Yep.
Please post. Motion carries.
Mr. Chair, these items are final action in the absence of an appeal within ten days.
Moving on to item number thirty-three, SUP four-eight-one-eight-zero. Applicant is Elite Media, the owner, City of Las Vegas, for possible action on a request for a special use permit for an off-premise sign at three-nine-five-one East Bonanza Road in Ward-three, Councilman Coffin. Staff is recommending approval. Staff, can we have a report, please?
Actually, Mr. Chairman, if I might jump in on...
I'm gonna bring that up.
Yes, item thirty-four, thirty-five, um, fifty-eight, and sixty-nine are all applications where the City of Las Vegas is the property owner, applicant is Elite Media. They are all parquet signs on various city properties. If we could open all five of those items up together, we will need to take a motion separately on each one.
Thank you. Okay, we've talked about item thirty-three. We'll move on now to item number thirty-four to read it in. That's SUP four-eight-one-eight-one, the applicant, Elite Media, owner, City of Las Vegas, for possible action on a request for a special use permit for an off-premise sign at six-five-zero North Mojave Road, Ward-three, Councilman Coffin. Staff is recommending approval. Item number thirty-five, SUP four-eight-one-eight-two, applicant is Elite Media, owner, City of Las Vegas, for possible action on a request for a special use permit for an off-premise sign at fourteen-hundred North Decatur Boulevard in Ward-five, Councilman Bartle. Staff is recommending approval. Item number fifty-eight, SUP four-eight-one-eight-three, applicant is Elite Media, owner, City of Las Vegas, for possible action on a request for a special use permit for a proposed off-premise sign at four-three-one East Bonanza Road, Ward-five, Councilman Barlow. Staff is recommending Item number sixty-nine, which is SUP four-nine-five-three-four, applicant is Elite Media, the owner is City of Las Vegas, for possible action on a request for a special use permit for a proposed off-premise sign at thirty-one-hundred Stewart Avenue in Ward-three, Councilman Coffin. Staff is also recommending approval. Staff, may we have the report?
Mr. Chairman, the proposed off-premise advertisement signs will be located on five separate City of Las Vegas-owned properties. These locations include the Mike Morgan Family Park at thirty-nine-fifty-one East Bonanza Road, the City of Las Vegas Maintenance and Storage Yard at sixty-five, six-fifty North Mojave Road, the Fountain Park at fourteen-hundred North Decatur Boulevard, the City of Las Vegas Municipal Pool at forty, four-thirty-one East Bonanza Road, and the City of Las Vegas Attention Enforcement Facility at thirty-one-hundred Stewart Avenue. All the proposed off-premise advertisement signs are in conformity with all Title Nineteen code standards and can be conducted in a compatible and harmonious manner with the existing surrounding land uses. Therefore, staff is recommending approval of the special use permits. Please note that an additional letter of protest has been received after the publishing in relation to item number sixty-nine, SUP four-nine-five-three-four. Thank you.
Thank you. May we hear from the applicant, please?
Good evening, Esther Carter, City of Las Vegas employee with the City Manager's Office. Um, an RFP was submitted in, uh, September of two thousand and ten. The contract was awarded to Elite Media. In, uh, January two thousand and thirteen, we finalized a contract with Elite Media that went before City of Council, City Council for approval. All of the sites have been approved by planning. Um, one-eighth of the ad time on all of the marquees will be allowed to the City of Employee, uh, City of Las Vegas for employee messages and City Manager, Mayor messages and special events, and at this time, we'd like to request your approval.
Thank you. Uh, we'll now open this up for public comment. Does anybody wish to be heard on this matter? Seeing none, I'll close the public comment portion, open it up for discussion amongst the board. Commissioner Truesdale?
Well, it's nice that Esther could stay late with us this evening. All these fine people gonna leave you standing up here and by yourself and hang out on this thing?
Where is the love? I have representatives here with Elite Media.
You know, obviously, the signs that have been brought before is, um, attractive in nature and such, and I've had this conversation with Ms. Perry and, uh, Elite Media in the past, and...these are very expensive lighted billboards, and, and they're, they're being, uh, proposed on public parks, and we have a lot of public parks here. What my biggest concern is, not that these aren't attractive, not that they don't provide, uh, some informational value, it's every other property owner in this, these corridors where parks are located, um, if they came before us for a billboard, we would hear outrage from most of council offices. We'd hear outrage from, "Oh, they're too close to residential," but because it's a park, we don't hear that, just like we have office buildings in, in corridors that have been impacted by the economic terms, and cell towers will come before us, and we immediately, well, God, if it was only over on the park and the city was getting revenue, then it would be approvable. That goes against, in my opinion, what the taxpayers and the people in the city... That goes against, in my opinion, what the taxpayers and the people in the city who have property rights have. We, we're, I don't want us to provide a greater opportunity for city properties over what the average property owner gets because they're getting charged twice then. You know, I pay my taxes, but yet the money-making lease revenue winds up on city, city property. And that's, that's really the concern here on a lot of these types of use. There's a sign out at Bob Bailey, it's not Bob Bailey, it's the soccer facility out on Lake Mead. Betty Wilson, that's it, that was put up and it had some minimal advertising to it. And at the time, everybody thought it was gonna be great and it's what a, we're getting this fifty thousand dollar sign out there. Well, it hasn't been maintained well over the years. The advertising has never generated any reasonable of it and no one spent much time changing the signs out. So those are concerns that, that I think Ms. Perry and her, her client could probably address.
Chairman, Commissioners, Mary and Perry representing Elite Media. My address is one hundred City Parkway, Suite seventeen fifty. And you've hit something that is incredibly important and I will hope that staff will agree. We, according to the contract and the RFP and the agreement that we have with the city, we, Elite Media is not given the opportunity to put signs in a place that would not otherwise be permitted based on the distance separations, the residential. These properties still have to meet those same setbacks and restrictions and it, the sites are actually brought to Elite Media's attention simply because they meet those requirements. These CV is a, permits off-premise advertising under the code. These properties were not asking for any waivers, not asking for any variances. Rather, there was this opportunity for off-premise signage on city properties. The city, as it should, had an RFP process so that those who were interested in putting forth the money to put up these signs, which as you have noted are incredibly expensive. The terms of the agreement that Elite Media has with the city have very specific and strict maintenance provisions. If they are not maintained, if there is any kind of disagreement with respect to the type of advertising that is put on those signs, Chad McCullough, who is here, he can come up and say this as well as I can, will be responsible to respond to those comments. Each of these sites was identified, and I will say, part of the reason that three, that these are not consecutive on the agenda is because three of them, there were other signs that were not an option because they would have required special treatment under the code, which were removed because they weren't considered to be copacetic with the requirements. And so we're not coming here and asking for waivers or variances. Am I, am I correct that staff is in agreement that these meet all the requirements?
Mr. Chairman, through you, just to confirm what Ms. Perry has said, that is correct. In terms of the locations that we have in the contract that City Council has approved, planning staff had to vet those out first to make sure that they would conform with all the requirements for off-premise signage. And so in terms of the five locations that you have before you this evening, we did look at other possibilities, but again, because of the exclusionary area for billboards, we couldn't locate them in wards two, four, and six. There were a number of other issues with other properties that we looked at. One had a historic designation that wouldn't have supported an off-premise sign. And so we were restricted in terms of the locations that we could consider. The five that you have before you this evening, again, were ones that do conform to the code requirements for off-premise signage.
Thank you. Anybody else wish to be heard? Seeing none, I'll entertain a motion.
Yes, Chairman, on item number thirty, excuse me, thirty-three, item number thirty-three, SUP four eight one eight zero, I would make a motion to follow staff's recommendation
Please post. Moving to item number thirty-four.
Thank you, Commissioners.
Where?
You have three more. You gotta stick around.
You got four more, actually.
You're gonna make me stay here all night for all of them?
Nice try to get out of here, but...
I'm just gonna be right.
Item number thirty-four, does the, anybody in the commission wish to discuss this item? Seeing none, I'll entertain a motion.
Yes, Chairman, and I just one comment. I, I think these are some great-looking signs and I'm typically adamantly opposed to billboards, especially in neighborhoods and stuff like that, but when you put this much effort and make a great-looking sign, I'm not opposed to it. So on, obeying item number thirty-four, SUP four eight one eight one, I would make a motion to follow staff's recommendation for approval.
Please vote. Please post. Motion carries. Moving on to item number thirty-five. Any discussion amongst the commission required? Seeing none, please entertain a motion.
Mr. Chairman, move for approval of SUP forty-eight one eighty-two, subject to all staff's recommendations and condition.
Please post. Motion carries. Going to item number fifty-eight. Does anybody wish to be heard on item fifty-eight on the board? Seeing none, I'll entertain a motion.
Mr. Chairman, move for approval of SUP four eight one eight three, subject to all staff's recommendations and condition.
Please vote. Please post. Motion carries. Going to item number sixty-nine. Do, do any of the commissioners wish to be heard on this item? Seeing none, I'll entertain a motion.
Yes, Chairman, one comment before my motion. Just wanted to state, I don't want to add this as a condition because we're still trying to find out, figure out our nets, lumens, and all those other fancy terms for how bright things need to be. Just make a conscious decision on how bright you are making out messages so we don't have to wear shades at night while we're going down, down the street looking at your, your signs. So on item number sixty-nine, SUP four nine five three four, I would make a motion to follow staff's recommendation for approval.
Motion carries.
Mr. Chair, items thirty-three, thirty-four, thirty-five, fifty-eight, and sixty-nine are all final action in the absence of an appeal within ten days.
Thank you. Now you can go.
Thank you. Would you like me to order pizza for you tonight? Thank you, Commissioners.
We were, we were laughing in the back that I've actually had two children since we started this process, so we very much appreciate final action and look forward to getting...
By the time they graduate from college, we'll get some more of them on. Have a good night.
Thank you. Moving on now to item number thirty-six is SUP four nine one five two. The applicant is Walmart Stores, Inc. The owner is WRI Charleston Commons, LLC, for possible action on a request for a special use permit for a proposed retail establishment with accessory packaged liquor off sale with an existing one hundred and eighteen thousand, three hundred and forty-eight square foot general retail store at two thousand and one North Nellis Boulevard in Ward Three, Councilman Coffin. Staff is recommending approval. Staff, may we have a report, please?
Mr. Chairman, the proposed retail establishment with accessory packaged liquor off sale use will be located within an existing Walmart as an accessory use. Proposed use can be conducted in a harmonious and compatible manner with the uses within the existing site and with the commercial uses on adjacent properties. Please note that additional letters of protest and support have been received after the publishing. Thank you.
Thank you. I'd like to hear from the applicant. If I could have names and addresses, please?
Good evening. Andy Moore with the law firm of Brownstein Hyatt Farber Shrek, one hundred North City Parkway, Suite sixteen hundred, Las Vegas, eight nine one oh six. With me to my right is my colleague, Alyssa Nate Worth. And to my left is Sherri Williamson, who's the store manager at the Walmart store. And then the actual property owner, Sherri McMasters, Susan McMasters.
Susan Masters?
McMasters.
Susan McMasters.
And Ms. Williamson, could we have your address?
Thirty-seven twenty-two Tundras One.
And thank you. And Ms. McMaster, could we have your address?
Eight six zero South Rancho Drive.
Thank you. Go ahead.
What we're proposing is a packaged liquor license for a existing Walmart store that's been in business for the last twenty-plus years. This is a, something that customers at the Walmart have requested to have these services. Walmart is actually gonna go through a remodel to make it more in line with its supercenter stores that are located across the valley. It's gonna offer more food items. It's gonna have bakery and produce as well. And in conjunction with that, they want to be able to sell beer, wine, and liquor to their customers. This is something, obviously, follow the staff's, staff's approval. It's something that, it complies with the special use permit requirements. It's harmonious, compatible, existing with the land uses. And one thing I wanted to really harp on is, in terms of public safety, the Walmart store has security inside and outside its store, patrolling the parking lot. It's gonna have, this store is actually just, they're taking one aisle, turning it into a liquor, they're just gonna stock liquor on that one aisle. It's gonna be closed off on one section. It's gonna only have access in one section. After ten o'clock at night, it's actually gonna be closed off entirely and you actually gotta consult an employee to be able to get access to the liquor. And so I just wanted to bring that up because obviously there was a detailed discussion earlier about packaged liquor license, and this is not a establishment in which there's a heavy pedestrian use. It's gonna be people that live in the community going there, doing their shopping. In conjunction with that shopping, they might pick up a six-pack of beer for weekend consumption. It's not a heavily pedestrian area. It's gonna be people in that community driving to that store, picking up items, and in addition to those items, maybe purchasing some beer or wine.
Thank you. Anybody else?
I'm the regional property manager for Winegarden Realty that owns this shopping center, and I too want to say that besides Walmart's security, we provide thirteen hours of security service at this location. We do not allow any loitering or any consumption of any liquid out. You cannot just hang out on the sidewalk and drink a Coke. You are asked to move on. We just keep, keep things moving there and it works out very well. The owners are in favor of this use.
Thank you. I'll now open this up for public comment. Does anybody wish to be heard on this matter? Sir, if you could state your name and address, please?
Good evening. Martin Dean D'Upolo, two oh nine Oakford Street, Las Vegas, Nevada, eight nine one one zero. If I may, obviously, I'm not here to oppose a remodeling. I'm not here to oppose the bakery. I'm not here to oppose anything but the packaged liquor sales. I am fortunate enough that a broad discussion was held earlier and I do appreciate those comments and a lot of those nuggets of information. A few days past, I provided each of the planning commissioners an email with support material and asked a few important questions. As part of the support material, I provided links to a city council meeting where the same prior effort by Walmart was dismissed with prejudice for a reason. I'd also like to note that not one of Walmart's corporate public commercials references putting hard liquor licenses or hard liquor stores in neighborhoods. Of all the fifteen that are out there, they talk about family budgets, organic produce, bakeries, Walmart moms, and so on. Not a single one of them talks about how good it would be to have a hard liquor license or hard liquor store in a neighborhood. Not one. I strongly believe, as before, that a high-value hard liquor license in my neighborhood only hurts the public health, safety, and welfare of our neighbors, and that is key. The saturation point for liquor, and it's a word that I've long used, it's not just tonight, it's not just last month, but four years ago when I went through this process, that our neighborhood has reached that saturation point and gone beyond. The same statistic provided last time was we've had some thirty-three hundred DUIs in a northeast area command. It's hard to parse out exactly where those DUIs were, but thirty-three hundred over the past three-plus years. It's a stat from Metro from Laura Meltzer. I ask you, as I did in the email, at what amount of liquor licenses does it endanger a neighborhood? Is it four? You had an earlier discussion about four downtown and adding to that some six, you had ten. I'm talking about a neighborhood. I'm not talking about an international destination, not talking about a place where you're supposed to go and party. I'm talking about our neighborhood. Is it ten? Is it twenty? Is it thirty? Is it forty? Is it fifty? What is that threshold? I'm asking you to tell me what that threshold is for my neighborhood. Second, how can you determine this without knowing the number of outlets? I teach political science and one things I try to, one of the things, many, I try to share with my students, if you're gonna have sound policy, you have to have sound data. And for that, I just want to point something out. Over here. Is this on? Yeah, okay. I want to make sure that you can see this. Over here, when you look at the map, I'm gonna point to the approximate area where my family lives. That is two oh nine Oakford Street, right there. We've lived here prior to Walmart. When they came in, they didn't say we wanted to have a hard liquor component to our store. They said, we're gonna do everything nice, we're gonna be good neighbors, come and shop with us. Now, they want a hard liquor outlet, a hard liquor license. Okay? Well, it's interesting that we look at this map here because something that I proposed to you and I asked about, how many liquor outlets do you see here? Well, you're sort of missing a whole bunch because while you're looking at maybe a school over here in the county, you're not picking up on any of the liquor licenses in the county. Now, if I can, there are liquor licenses right here, 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 but yet it doesn't show that, it doesn't indicate that on this map. You were given this map to base a decision off of, but I don't see where it's colored in for beer, wine, and cooler sales right there, there, or there. Now, I've spoken with staff and they said, well, that's the county. I understand that. This broader area is my family's neighborhood. I don't just limit it to my side, the City of Las Vegas. I actually, my family, we shop on the other side. We go to school on the other side. And likewise, this is a broader neighborhood. So when you're looking at this map and you go, well, gosh, you know, that line right there separates everything, well, you're gonna make this important decision and you have this legend over here that says beer, wine, and cooler sales with a yellow diamond, but it doesn't show. This is inaccurate information in front of you. There are several dozen liquor licenses out there within a one-point-two mile radius of our home. When I approached the city council last time, I showed them repeatedly. I showed them two after two after two after two, and each of you has access to that in an email that I, I provided you. And it shows the DUIs. It shows the DUIs, the cars versus fences, cars versus walls, cars versus cars, and cars in my neighborhood versus homes. It's a serious public health situation. It is no different than it was four years ago in that sense. We've reached that saturation point as a neighborhood, not as an international destination, a neighborhood. So I leave you with that. Thank you.
Thank you, sir. Does anybody else wish to be heard on this matter? Seeing none, I'll close the public comment portion and open it up for discussion amongst the board.
Is it possible for me to just address some of the issues that Mr. D'Upolo raised?
Go ahead.
Okay. One thing I wanted to address is, I mean, I acknowledge Walmart applied in two thousand and eight and was denied the liquor license applications currently applying for. Since then, there's been twelve liquor licenses that have been issued in the surrounding area within a one-point-five mile radius. There were three special use permits that were issued since then. I don't believe Mr. D'Upolo came out in opposition to those, and I just want to reiterate, I mean, there's twelve-hundred-fifty-plus cards that were mailed out to neighbors in the community. Mr. D'Upolo is the only one that's shown up at both the hearings from last month and this month voicing opposition to this application, and I believe there was only one other opposition. And I believe there was only one other opposition card that was submitted in connection with this application. The other thing I want to do is just differentiate, obviously, between a packaged liquor license and a tavern or a restaurant-type liquor license. It brings up the DUI statistics. What we're asking for is, obviously, a packaged liquor license for off-premises consumption. People are going to purchase this liquor, consume it at home. There's not going to be the issues of drunk driving. And he brings up these crime statistics, and I believe in the previous materials he submitted, so there were something like thirteen hundred calls within a two-month period. I just did basic, I mean, I don't know where he's getting those statistics, but the statistics that are available online are substantially less than thirteen hundred calls, and I don't know where he's necessarily getting those statistics. And obviously, the last time we were here, last month, there was actually a pretty detailed discussion on the record about the differentiation between a packaged liquor license and a tavern liquor license and what might actually lead to his concerns about drunk driving.
Thank you. Any other commissioners want to be heard? Commissioner Truesdale?
I understand your comments with regards to, we don't see the bright little colors all throughout the county. But I guarantee you, when I go and look at one of these items before us, or the other, I know other planning commissioners do, we do look at the neighborhood. We look around here. This Walmart, or any regional-type retailer, this is not a Walmart grocery. This is a Walmart, and it was always built as such, draws from about a five-to-six-mile radius. So there are people coming from a lot of different areas. Now, I don't think they come there and drink and then drive home. They're not, I don't think people sit around and say, "Hey, let's get all boozed up and drive to Walmart." So I don't think that correlates to your direct item with regard to, is this a contributor to those type of bad acts? But in that same distance, there are numerous restaurants, convenience stores, supper clubs, taverns that may or may not contribute to that. But people expect to go into Smith's. They expect to go into Vaughn's and have the availability of packaged liquor. Now, why this didn't get submitted earlier, or why it wasn't approved back, I'm looking at what's before us, and this is a regional-type shopping center, a power center, if you will. And it's got major, so they draw from a greater area. It makes more sense for people to get their groceries and everything and make less trips than some of the other type uses that we do. So I know you live close to this and feel that it may be a greater impact on you than some of you who lives two blocks away or four blocks away. But you're also on the other side of a huge flood channel. It's not where people are meandering across that location to get to you. People aren't buying their groceries and climbing over the, they may walk the street because it is a pedestrian-oriented area. But I don't see where this creates a greater impact on the neighborhood than what currently exists. So I feel it is compatible. It's definitely compatible within a Walmart-type use of full grocery and all the related items. And I will support this.
Thank you, Commissioner. Anybody else? Commissioner Sloman?
Yes, Chairman. And I did get your email, and I read it, start to finish, watched some videos. And so I appreciate you putting all that information together. But when I'm looking at this, there was eighty-two, eighty-three establishments within a five-mile period, or one mile, however many miles from your location. And, but when I got to looking at this, there was only six packaged liquor stores within that area. And whenever I try looking at, you know, the different uses which might cause, you know, more DUIs and more wrecks, it's, and I hate to just repeat everything that Rick said, but I think it's kind of important. I think, you know, a lot of these DUI cases stem from either a barbecue or it stems from one of the taverns in the area where somebody has had too much to consume. And I don't think it's necessarily a direct correlation between going into a Walmart, picking up a bottle of Jack Daniels or vodka, whatever your flavor is, going out to your truck and consuming this before you take off. So I feel that for most individuals that would purchase a bottle of liquor in a grocery store, picking up their groceries, are more than likely heading back to the house versus boozing it up. And if you are boozing it up and your favorite bar closes, you're not going to pick the Walmart to go wander through three miles inside of all the aisles inside of a Walmart superstore. You're going to pick some little liquor establishment, which is already existing. So my, I have very few concerns that this is going to add any crime or DUIs within that particular neighborhood.
Thank you, Commissioner. Anybody else wish to be heard? Seeing none, I'll entertain a motion.
Yes, Chair, on item number thirty-six, abeyance item, renotation, SUP four-nine-one-five-two, I would make a motion, follow staff's recommendation for approval.
Thank you. Please vote. Please post. Motion carries.
Mr. Chair, that item is final action in the absence of an appeal within ten days.
Good night.
Thank you.
Thank you. Item number thirty-seven is SUP four-nine-one-five-four. The applicant is All-Star Mini Mart. Owner is S&amp;J Shopping Center LLC. For possible action on a request for a major amendment to an approved special use permit, SUP three-nine-eight-one-two, to add forty-five square feet of accessory packaged liquor off-sale use within an existing 2,400-square-foot convenience store at two-three-three-nine North Jones Boulevard, Ward Five, Councilman Barlow. Staff is recommending approval. Staff, may we have a report, please?
Mr. Chairman, the requested area of retail display expansion will encompass approximately sixty square feet of display area for packaged liquor and remains within the allowable ten percent of retail floor area dedicated to the display of alcoholic beverages. Staff recommends approval of the proposed amendment to special use permit, SUP three-nine-eight-one-two, as the use continues to meet the Title 1912 requirements for retail establishment with accessory package liquor off-sale use. Thank you.
Thank you. And before we start, I need to just ask you a quick question. Is, I noticed that Barry Becker is part of this. Is Ernie Becker Jr. part of this as well?
I believe Barry Becker signed the application. I cannot confirm that Ernie Becker is involved.
I think out of an abundance of caution, if you think that his brother is a partner in this, it's appropriate to...
Yeah, I think I'm going to have to abstain on this. Out of an abundance of caution, I was involved in extensive litigation representing clients against Ernie Becker Jr. So Commissioner Moody, if you'll take over, please.
Thank you, Mr. Chair. Was this already read into the record? All right.
Good evening. Laura Dreha with the Law Offices of Brown Brown in Premstrowit, here on behalf of the Shashani family. This family has been operating All-Star Mini Mart for twenty-four hours a day for several years. They originally obtained approval to sell accessory packaged liquor in 2010. At that point in time, the floor plan used only fifteen feet of area located behind the counter to store the alcohol that wasn't beer and wine. At this point in time, we want to expand to the full amount of shelf space behind the counter, which totals sixty feet. So it, for, in observation of Commissioner Slotman's concern, there is not an opportunity for children to slip alcohol in their pocket. It's located behind the counter for exactly that reason. So again, this is a use permit that we already have. We just want to expand the shelf space. And we are only asking for half of what the guidelines of Title 19 say. Title 19 limits the floor space for hard alcohol to ten percent. We're asking for only five percent of our store, again, to keep it all behind the counter so that the clerk can look in the eyes of the people that are requesting the sale of this.
Thank you very much. I'll open this up for a public hearing. Does anyone wish to be heard on this item? Seeing none, I'll close the public hearing and open for discussion amongst the planning commissioner. Commissioner Goins?
I have no problem with the request. I think it's, it's proper. I know Laura knows what my pet peeve is, and we discussed that today. Just for the record, we discussed that today and met, so I'm good with it. If no other questions, I'll entertain a motion for, to follow staff's recommendation for approval. SUP four-nine-one-five-four, subject to all staff's recommendations and condition.
Please vote. Please post. That motion carries, noting the abstention of Commissioner Flengus.
And this item will go forward to the August 21 city council meeting.
Thank you. Moving on now to related items thirty-eight and thirty-nine, beginning with item number thirty-eight, GPA four-nine-four-eight-nine.
Chairman, those have been obeyed.
Okay. Apologize. We're now on items, related items forty and forty-one, beginning with item forty, GPA four-nine-five-three-zero. The applicant is Harmony Homes, Inc. The owner is Alan Rothstein, 1994 trust. For possible action on a request for a general plan amendment from DR Desert Rural Density Residential to ML Medium Low Density Residential at the northwest corner of Pioneer Way and Hickam Avenue in Ward Four, Councilman Anthony. Staff is recommending denial. Item number forty-one, which is related, ZON four-nine-five-three-one, for possible action on a request for a rezoning from U undeveloped DR Desert Rural Density Residential, general plan designation, to RCL Single Family Compact Lot, also in Ward Four, Councilman Anthony. Staff is recommending denial. Staff, may we have a report, please?
Mr. Chairman, the requested changes to ML Medium Low Density Residential and RCL Single Family Compact Lot designations are inappropriate for the rural setting of this neighborhood and indicates an overdevelopment of the site. Staff recommends denial of both requests. Please note, we have received additional protest and one additional letter of support since publication.
Thank you. I'd like to hear from the applicant. Name and address, please.
Darryl Adamore, eighty-nine-twelve Spanish Ridge Avenue, Las Vegas, Nevada, eight-nine-one-four-eight. I'm here today to present this plan to you. Our original intent, when we came in to present this, was to actually ask for R1. The issue that we had is that the product line that I'm looking to do in this area is, has a swing garage in it. And... Sorry, I don't know if my head's getting in the way here. So what I'm looking at, so what I'm looking at doing here is an R1. Originally, I wanted to make all these setbacks work, but I had to ask for RCL in order to get the swing garage to work. I've been talking to neighbors, and they really don't like the RCL. And I know the city's position that if you guys hard zone, this is RCL, I can come back later and put something very small in here. I'm not sure if this is even possible, but can I actually ask for downzoning from RCL and just request a straight R1 on this site at this time? Because I believe staff was in support of an R1 zoning of this.
Mr. Chair, if I might respond to the question the applicant has made. Per Title 1916 of our Code of Ordinances, an applicant may request, or a city council may approve, a less dense project than what the applicant has requested. So in this particular instance, the applicant has submitted an application for RCL, which is residential compact lot. If he were to revise that request to R1, it is less dense, less intense than the previous request, and so city council could approve that. And just also to note that these items, since this is a general plan amendment and a rezoning, it does require action by the city council, so it will be forwarded to them.
Thank you, Mr. Director. And that's what you want to do? You want to go down to R1?
Yes. So I'm going to put up the site plan. This is my site plan that we originally came in with, and that's what we want to do. R1 zoning, the minimum lot size is 6,500 square feet. My minimum net lot in here is 7,600 square feet. What we were trying to accomplish here when we were looking at, wait, do you guys have like a microphone or something I can hold? Can you hear me fine in this? Okay. So when we were looking at this lot, we were trying to figure out zoning-wise, how we can make this work. We have RPDA to the east. We have R1 to the south. We have Clark County RE to the west and to the north. So we looked at a few different things here. Well, what actually works here? So we figured R1 would work here in relationship to the R1 to the south, and definitely much larger than RPDA. The only issue that we also looked at in here was trying to make the RE people in the county happy. Well, as you know, in the county, they have an RMP zoning. This isn't RMP. This is a straight RE. But the policy of Clark County is to transition 10,000-square-foot lots into the RE area. Now, the county looks at gross acreage, which goes to the center line of the street. All my lots on the north-facing street, I have gross 10,000-square-foot lots. So I believe I've accomplished what the county would look for in a transitional area with these lots to the north. Now, compatible with straight R1 to the south, and these lots over here, again, are gigantic compared to these other lots to the south also. So I'm making the transition to RE on this point here. This is what I plan to come back with for a tentative map, if you guys approve the GPA to low and the zoning to R1. Unless you guys have any more questions, I'd ask for approval for R1 and low on the...
Thank you, sir. I'll now open this up for public comment. Does anybody wish to be heard on this matter? It looks like there are going to be a few. We do have two mics. Just line up, or actually, we have three mics. If you can line up behind the mics.
While we're waiting for the people to speak, could I get staff on the record to state if you agree with the applicant's representation, that you are okay with R1?
I'm sorry. I was having another discussion about this.
Before anybody speaks, I'll get staff's representation on the record that the applicant has represented that you are okay with R1, not the RCL. Is that accurate?
I can't answer that. I'll defer to the director on that. I wasn't part of the review of this.
Yes, staff could support the R1 zoning designation.
Thank you, Ms. Jerbic. Okay, if you'll state your names and addresses, please, when you come up to the podium.
Good evening, Chairman. Flengus, Robert Coche, COA CHE, four-two-eight-zero, North Tioga Way. Live 100 feet sou, or excuse me, north of this project. The zoning doesn't matter in his proposal. From the RC to the one, it's still, he's proposing seventeen lots on less than four-and-a-half acres of land. Normal, you're across to the immediate west. You're talking four lots on two-and-a-half acres. General zoning for this would be eight lots on the property, maybe nine. We've been down this road before, several years ago, with the prior owner that went bankrupt out there with this project. And I think they approved it at nine lots then, maybe ten.
I believe it was ten in 2004.
Yeah, ten. So we've, like, so we've been down that road, plus even with that, was an eight-foot-high block wall to the north, I believe, also is a part of a requirement for that. So the, even at that, at that capacity, it was previously approved up to the seventeen. Now, we're talking what, an additional 70% increase in the homes that are there. And there was, you know, as you probably were, you probably were on the board, or the commission then, extensive discussion about the previous project that was there or that was proposed for there. So I would, you know, hopefully, they could chair or table it tonight or decline it because of the change in the zoning and having staff look at it. Appreciate it.
Thank you, sir. Ma'am?
My name's Laurie Kelly, seventy-five-oh-one Turtle Dove Court. I live in the community just to the south. It's R1 as well. The folks in our neighborhood don't really have that big of an issue with the zoning. It's the size of the home. It's the size of the homes that they're going to put on these lots. Our lots are similar in size, but the largest home in our neighborhood is 2,100 square feet. These homes are going to be twice that size. They're going to be 40... The largest home is 4,200 square feet on a 7,600 square foot lot, which is, dwarfs the lot, and which we just don't really care for the, that idea. So that's the concern of that, our neighborhood.
Thank you. Sir?
My name is Randall Reese. I live at 4270 North Tyoga Way. My family has owned all this land on the, adjacent to this whole property, this whole project. I believe that 17 homes on that piece of land is way too much. He talks about the transition into the RE. Well, where's my transition? I'm going to be looking at two-story homes that'll be looking right down into my chicken yard, horse corrals. I just think that it's disrespectful to the surrounding community to come and try and throw that many homes in an area that size. We moved out there for rural life, and I just think that they should follow suit with the homes surrounding.
Thank you. Ma'am?
Hi. Ann Casey, 7460 Helena. Do you see that? This is one of your... I was born in Las Vegas some 60 years ago. I was raised in a rural neighborhood, Tropicana, eastern area. I saw what happened out there, but I loved it. I loved rural, and that's why I moved out to this area 30-something, 32 years ago, for the rural lifestyle. Obviously, we've been encroached upon pretty significantly. What you see on this property is all of the yellow is rural. There is the DR Horton here, that's the desert rural next door. It's about a third of an acre that gives some buffer, and that's part of the rules, is there needs to be some buffer. What they want to do is have no buffer between the rural and the higher density. They're going, as he said, 17 houses where in a desert, the DR, it would be 10. I happen to live exactly next door to this DR. I didn't like it when you approved that. I now have, I have eight homes abutting my property. Eight abutting my property. Of those homes, this is, this is what the house that's in a rural that looks, that's right next to me, that's in the rural area. That's about 200 feet from me. This is the now view of these people, these houses that are going to be built next to me, have into my bathroom as I'm taking a shower. They're going to be, you don't like the person on Fremont Street? They're going to be able to see me taking a shower, see the color of my eyes, if not the rest of me. So there's nothing I can do about this, but it is not compatible to have this kind of density abutted directly up against the rural. There's no street in between. There is no buffer. There's nothing to mitigate this additional density, to have 17 homes. The Reeses will have the same thing that I have. All of those homes will be directly against them. The, it's going to change the character of the neighborhood significantly. As I said, we all moved there. We've all lived there for many, many years. It's going to change the character of the neighborhood significantly. It's going to degrade our lifestyle. A rural lifestyle is about privacy. It's about space. It's about quietness. It's about all sorts of things that this doesn't have. You know, we have peacocks walking down the street. We have fowl in the backyard. We have horses. We have all of those kinds of things. These houses that are going to take up their entire lots are going to be next door to the horse poop. They're not going to like that any more than we're going to like them. They're taking up the entire lot. It's incompatible. They're higher density than the lots that are here for, that are supposed to serve as a buffer for us, and they're directly adjacent. There's not even a street in between. All of the neighborhoods used to oppose this. It's incompatible. There are no other factors that would justify approving this, and I would ask that you deny it. Thank you.
Thank you. Does anybody else wish to be heard on this matter?
I apologize, sir. I do have to state, also, my neighbor Gordon Leonard couldn't make it tonight, and he wanted to state that he denied, supported denial also.
Thank you. Sir, come on up.
Good evening. My name is Alan Rothstein, 8616 Canyon View Drive. The whole world is changing. Nothing is the same. And I remember when I moved here in 77 and was going down Sahara when we hit Decatur, that was just about the end. And so now, people that lived in certain spots, everything changed. But if you take a look at the map, directly to the, to the east and directly to the north, is high-density houses right next to this property. So it's the way things are going to be. And as more and more people move in to Vegas, and I think we're going to have a lot of people, a lot more people here in time, we're going to need all this land for everybody to live on, so it's going to get smaller and smaller and smaller. But I think a 7,000-square-foot lot nowadays is a very good-sized lot compared to most of the houses that they're building, where you have a driveway that's eight or 10-foot long. You can't even put your car in the driveway. You got to park in the, in the garage. So I think that that size house that they want to put on there is great, and it's economical, and a lot of people will be able to afford it, where they wouldn't be able to afford it if it was a single-story house.
Thank you, sir. Does anybody else wish to be heard on this matter? If you're going to, if you're going to continue, other people want to speak, I would ask you, please come forward and be sitting up in the front row, so you can come right up to the podium.
Can I just say, I'm not sure that he said that he's the property owner and is going to make him buck off of it?
Thank you.
Hello. My name is Martin Honish. I live at 7501 Turtle Dove Court. The main reason I oppose this, it's too many, too many homes in this area. It's going to increase pressure on the schools, on the police department, on emergency services. It doesn't fit. They talk about the transition between the, the high-density homes that are on the other side of Pioneer, but the Pioneer is a buffer. This is right up against the property behind it, the Reeses' homes and property. The homes are too big, and there's too many of them, and that area's not built for that amount of homes. And I'd like everybody to stand up that's opposed to this, that hasn't got up to speak. If you would please stand up. So there's more, more of us here than you think, but we're all opposed to this, and thank you for your time.
Thank you. Anybody else wish to be heard? Earlier today, I gave the applicant the last word. If you want to respond, go ahead, and then I'll open it up for the commissioners.
I just wanted to point out with the layout that I have in here, we did try, we did put the additional depth into these lots adjacent to the RE. Now, these are about 133 feet deep. Based on the layout that I have here and my product, you can add 10 feet onto that. Most of these people are going to have 40-foot backyards facing these RE lots, and on this case, they'd have 35 on the single-story. So it's not like they're pressed right up against them like that one exhibit that lead lady put up there. They're not right against these RE. We're all facing out towards the perimeter of the project with all of our rears. And that's all I wanted to say about that.
Thank you. I'll close the public comment portion, open it up for discussion amongst the commissioners. Commissioner Boner?
Maybe you can come back to the podium for a second. It seems to me you said you wanted to go to the center line to calculate the size of your lots?
No, no. What, these are based on net, what I have in here now, the way the city of Las Vegas calculates it. I was just using an example that I'm adjacent to Clark County neighbors, and that Clark County policy is to have a 10,000-square-foot lot adjacent to RMP. I was just illustrating that I am actually meeting their transitional goals for the county against an RE.
What's the size of your lots adjacent to the county?
Right now, I have a net of, this one's 7735, but when you go to the center line of the street, all the way down here, these are all minimum 10,000.
Don't go to the center line of the street. What's your net lot size?
They are, I have 7,700 is my smallest lot.
That doesn't meet the 10,000. It shows a disrespect for the rural area next to you.
It shows respect for what the county is, what they require.
Commissioner Truesdale?
I think the neighbors actually said it best. I mean, they've got desert rural, and they're rather big houses. They wind up closer than what the, and you're wanting to go to R1. I think, I think the GPA and the zoning is a mess, and you're showing us a plan that isn't really the plan before us. It's like, we're going to come back with this. I, I'm not sure with the way the presentation's gone, if we're, if we're approving 17 lots or we're approving 10 lots. It was approved one time for 10 lots. Where'd that plan go? Is it, that not feasible, or you don't want to do that, or? I mean, 17 lots is a pretty big change from what the adjacent parcel is. So there's not really a buffer or a stepping down like you're describing. It's, we're going from RE to R1, and it's, I mean, the average tract home is less than, right around 6,500 feet. These are not big lots, whether, I mean, you think they are, and you present them as big lots, but they're not. And I'm, I'm not going to support this.
Thank you, Commissioner. Anybody else wish to be heard? I'm going to have to concur with Commissioner Truesdale. In 2004, as I pointed out, this was a, this was approved for 10 lots, and it looked like that that was consistent with the area. You know, the other thing that concerns me, you start getting as dense as you are in there, and I heard the one gentleman speak and tell me he's got horses and stuff on the, in his backyard, and different other things happening there, and I just don't think a 17-lot site develop, or a site plan is appropriate for that property there. If you came back with the 10, you'd have my support right out, right out the gate. So I can't support it either. Anybody else wish to comment?
If there's no other comments, Mr. Chairman, with regards to item 40, I'd move to follow staff's recommendation for denial.
Please vote, and note that a yes vote is for denial.
With regards to item 41, move to follow staff's recommendations for denial.
Okay, motion carries.
That is of the amended request.
Excuse me. Motion carries on item number 40.
The amended request, yes.
And now, if you'll do item number 41, Mr. Truesdale.
Yeah, move to follow staff's recommendation for denial, but even though he made a request to go to the R1, still, I think his density is too great.
Please vote, and again, note that a yes vote is for denial. Please post. Motion carries for denial.
Mr. Chairman, these items go forward to the August 21 city council meeting.
Moving on now to item 48, VAR 49172. Applicant is Food and the Fastlane LLC. The owner is Darcy Kathleen Hutton. For possible action on a request for a variance to allow 21 parking spaces where 26 spaces are required at 825 and 831 North Rancho Drive, APNs 139-29-701-001 and 002. C1 Limited Commercial Zone, commercial, excuse me, C1 Zone Limited Commercial in Ward 5, Councilman Barlow. Staff is recommending approval. And the related item number 49, which is SDR 49171, for possible action on a request for a site development plan review for a 2085 square-foot restaurant with drive-through with waivers of perimeter landscape buffer standards to allow a zero-foot buffer along the east property line and a three-foot buffer along portions of the west property line where 15 feet is required. In Ward 5, Councilman Barlow, staff is also recommending approval. Staff, may we have the reports, please?
Mr. Chairman, currently, the site is occupied by two vacant buildings, which have contributed to urban blight in the area. The site is also impacted with a large amount of right-of-way along this portion of Rancho. This project will greatly improve the safety and overall aesthetics of the area if approved. Staff recommends approval with conditions due to the unique shape of the parcels and the limited development potential that result from it. Please note, we have received additional support letters since publication.
Thank you. Could hear from the applicant, please, and give your name and address.
David Dwyer, Dwyer Engineering, 7310 Smoke Ranch Road, Suite E, Las Vegas, 89128.
Thank you. Go ahead.
Thank you. We have reviewed all of the conditions and are in agreement with all of them, except for item 14. I would like to add a sentence. The issuance of city permits is not dependent upon receipt of NDOT permits.
If I could interject here, I received a phone call today from Mr. Harris regarding this project, and I believe after talking with Lucian, that the way it's written right now accomplishes just that. So I'm willing to state on the record that even though your NDOT permits will be required for your driveway aprons, you may get the rest of your permits with that language as already written, so you can begin your project and deal with your NDOT issues as you proceed. Is that satisfactory?
That's satisfactory to me. Thank you, sir.
Thank you. I'll open this up for public comment. Does anybody wish to be heard? Seeing none, I'll close the public comment portion, open it up for discussion amongst the board. Seeing no one wanted to discuss, let's all entertain a motion.
Mr. Chairman, I'll move to follow staff's recommendations for approval, subject to all conditions.
Please vote. Please post. Motion carries.
With regard to item 49, move for approval, subject to all staff's recommendations and conditions.
Please vote. Please post. Motion carries.
Thank you, commissioners, and thank you, staff, for all of your hard work on this project. Appreciate it.
Mr. Chairman, this item goes forward to the August 21 city council meeting.
Thank you. Moving on now to related items 54 and 55, VAR 49536. Applicant owner, 900 Fremont LLC. For possible action on a request for a variance to allow a 10-foot-tall fence in the front yard where five feet is the maximum allowed, and on the side and rear yards where eight feet is the maximum allowed, at 82, at 820 Fremont Street, Ward 3, Councilman Coffin. Staff is recommending approval. Related item number 55, SDR 49532, for possible action on a request for a site development plan review for a proposed commercial recreation amusement outdoor use private dog park with a waiver to allow 55% turf coverage where 12.5% is the maximum turf coverage allowed. In Ward 3, Councilman Coffin, staff is recommending approval. Staff, may we have a report, please?
Mr. Chairman, I'm sorry.
I'm sorry.
I did not under, I thought I heard him say this is going on to the, to the city council. I don't believe it is.
No, it has been requested to be pulled forward to city council.
No, it has been requested to be pulled forward to city council. Title nineteen-sixteen of the code says that items can be final action at planning commission unless either appealed or else pulled forward by a member of city council. In this case, it has been pulled forward by a member of city council and so it has been requested for the August twenty-first city council meeting.
And, and is it possible to find out which city councilman pulled it forward?
This is a Ward Five item, so the councilman in Ward Five has requested the item come forward.
Okay.
Thank you, gentlemen. And staff, may we have a report, please, on items fifty-four and fifty-five?
Chairman, before we get started, I'll be abstaining on this item as I am under contract with the applicant for this project.
Thank you, Commissioner.
Mr. Chairman, the applicant is proposing to build a private urban dog park on a vacant parcel at the Fremont Street and Ninth Street within the downtown area. The park would be utilized by the downtown residents who will pay a membership fee for access to the park. No structures are proposed for the site with the exception of a temporary trailer. The site will have an eight-to-ten-foot tall fence around it. The purpose of the fence, fence's height is, is for the protection and safety of the general public from canines that may jump over a smaller fence. A waiver is also required to allow up to sixty-three percent of the site to be covered with turf. The use is appropriate in the C-two general commercial zoning district. The variance and waivers are justifiable and can be supported by staff. Therefore, staff recommends approval of both applications with conditions. Please note that additional letters of support have been received after the publishing. Thank you.
Thank you. I'd like to hear from the applicant, please, and name and addresses.
Good evening, uh, Mr. Chairman, members of the planning commission, Jennifer Roberts of Lionel Sawyer &amp; Collins, three-hundred South Fourth Street, appearing on behalf of the applicant on this site development plan review and variance for a creative and desired business in the developing downtown Las Vegas area. And staff has recommended approval, so I will have Kathy Brook, Brooks, excuse me, Kathy Brooks briefly discuss the proposed project.
And thank you. And Ms. Brooks, could you give us your address?
Yes, uh, good evening or good morning, almost, uh, Chairman and Commissioners. I'm Kathy Brooks. Residence is one-fifty Las Vegas Boulevard North, apartment two-thousand-three in downtown Las Vegas. Uh, first, I'd like to thank you all for your time considering my project this evening. And I'd like to take a brief moment just to give a bit more insight in what this project actually is. It's been described as a private dog park, which is accurate partly. It's actually has a far more broad perspective of what we're going to try to accomplish downtown. The Hydrant Club is a membership access space for people and their dogs. It has a purpose for the downtown existing dog community and dog owners to be a safe and a pleasant place for the community to connect and to learn what it means to be a responsible dog owner as well as a responsible dog in an urban environment like downtown. Central activities are going to actually be around education, dog training, canine behavioral study, educational seminars, social activities, and all within a space that is designed and utilized to exercise what people have learned to do there. As noted in the staff report, we are requesting some variances, each of which actually play directly into the core purpose of the property, specifically the eight-to-ten-foot perimeter fence, uh, which, it thinks important to note, we've carefully considered the need to balance, uh, a community orientation and transparency with the safety. So this isn't going to be a fortress. It's actually going to be, uh, an attractive visually appealing site that's partially transparent to the eye. The height, though, will allow us to prevent dogs from jumping over, which is for the safety of the dogs as well as for the safety of the people who might be passing by, whether on the sidewalk or, or driving. So the other is, um, is also the variance on turf coverage. As noted, this is an outdoor park space, so we think that's probably pre, pretty relevant for, for the space to have more turf coverage. And as noted, the state, the staff has recommended approval for the project, so we respectfully request that you would accept their recommendation. And if you have any questions, happy to answer them.
Thank you very much. I'll now open this up for public comment. Does anybody wish to be heard on this matter? And sir, if you'll state your name and address, please?
Name is, uh, Andy Bischoff, representing the Animal Foundation, uh, six-five-five North Mojave Road. Um, I'm out for support for Ms. Brooks. She's, uh, new resident, but also has, uh, reached out to the existing, uh, animal welfare uh, agencies to get a feel for how she can best serve the community, both educationally, training, and, uh, with the homeless pets in, in the community. Thank you.
Thank you. Anybody else? Your name and address, ma'am?
Good evening, I'm Gina Bon Jovi on behalf of Bon Jovi Law Firm, twenty-six-twenty Regatta Drive. And I would also like to speak in support of the, uh, Hydrant Club Dog Park Social Club, uh, for animals, um, not only as a native Las Vagan, also as a, an attorney and as, um, a dog owner myself. I've been actively involved in a lot of rescue groups, um, and her attention to the safety issues that would surround such a development and the, actually finally being revitalized downtown area is, uh, definitely deserves your support. Thank you very much.
Thank you. Does anybody else wish to be heard on this matter? Seeing none, I'll close the public comment portion, open it up for discussion amongst the board. Commissioner Trusdale?
Oh, well, I, yeah.
Commissioner Moody?
I just want to make sure schnauzers are welcome here.
They're encouraged. They're encouraged.
Can you explain again the reason for the fence height? I mean, 'cause I, I do believe an eight-plus, eight-to-ten-foot fence will recreate, create a, uh, a fortress barrier. Um, and I'm, I live in a neighborhood with parks and tons of dogs and some of them could use some better ownership, but...
Feel free to give them my number.
They're, they're really, but they're five-foot fences. And, uh, even big dogs don't tend to, you know, want to jump over it. So I, I guess I'm more concerned this is a fence to keep prying eyes out rather than, and that's not what we, we really need downtown. We need, uh, you know, at least you didn't have a packaged liquor license with this tonight, but, uh, you know, you never know. The dogs might want to drink while they're there.
Well, there is apparently Bowser beer now, but my, I won't let my dog drink it, so...
But I, I really believe the fencing is, is a concern.
Sure. Well, um, I, I would like to have actually Craig Palacios, I want the architect on the, on the project, show some of the images of what we're doing with the fence, just to assuage any of your concerns about what it might look like. From a height perspective, though, I've seen a boxer clear a six-foot fence from a standing start without even moving a whisker. Um, my concern, because this is a downtown urban space rather than some of the parks which are a bit more suburban in, in the area here, is that there's a lot of noise, there are a lot of things that could startle a dog. And if one dog gets startled and goes over that fence, um, little Susie's, you know, boxer could get hit by a car, the person driving the car could be injured. There's a lot of injury that could happen. So it really is, it is for a safety perspective. Uh, but Craig, perhaps you can talk about the, the images themselves.
Sure. Am I, am I up here? Okay, cool. So, yeah, obviously, as you can imagine, there was a lot of...
Before you start, sir, I'd need your name and address, sorry.
I'm, uh, Craig Palacios. Uh, my address is eight-hundred East Oaky Boulevard, Las Vegas, Nevada, eight-nine-one-zero-four.
Thank you.
Um, yeah, so as, as you can imagine, there was a lot of discussion about this fence height issue when we first became engaged with the project. Um, our understanding is that, uh, the, the, uh, you know, the, the normal height for this type of fence is ten feet, the desired is twelve. Um, you know, we're, our office is two blocks away from here. I live on Eighth, um, just down the street from here. So we have another interest in the neighborhood other than just, um, you know, a project. Um, this is our home and we're in the process of beautifying a lot of, a lot of areas. And the last thing that we want to do is create another wall. Um, so we've, we've, we've attempted to provide a lot of care in doing this. And what we've done is we've created, if you look at this, um, this is the original inspiration for the project. And the idea is to create, um, uh, take the inspiration, um, from something natural. In this case, it's grass or reeds, like a bamboo forest, and create something that's very impenetrable. So it's different reeds of, uh, bars that, um, is it not a...
It, we're trying to show, display here that, so that you can see the picture. Is it showing on yours?
No. Oh, sorry. When I was asking if I was on, it wasn't my voice, so I was wondering if this was showing. So...
What we were seeing is your natural inspiration was an old, outdated parking lot. And we were trying to figure out how that inspired a dog park.
We could do the interpretive dance, but I think maybe the dogs are...
So, you know, the idea, the idea here is to create an impenetrable wall from, uh, keeping people out, keeping trash out, keeping, um, the dogs in, but not make it so that you can't see through. And, and the concept here is these, these vertical reeds or, you know, sort of a organic fence. And basically what we have is, the description in the, in the report is not totally accurate 'cause the, the single impenetrable area is eight feet. And it's created out of, um, one-inch by one-inch tube steel with a, a mesh in between, uh, a one-inch screen mesh, um, that's really what's the impenetrable part. And then we've created this level of, um, texture moving out, which is landscaping and these, these vertical reeds. Um, this is a quick, uh, artist's sketch of, you know, sort of how this, how this system would work. You have your, your sidewalk, you have your landscape, you have your reeds. Within the layer of reeds is the fence, another layer of reeds and the landscape on the outside, and then our sort of area of, of use comes outside of that. Um, another image, you know, again, just a quick sketch of what this, this fencing system will look like. Um, these reeds are, are quite far apart at some locations, closer in others. Different variances create, um, what we think is going to be attractive amenity in the neighborhood rather than a, you know, your, your sort of standard CMU wall or, um, what was specified for parking areas in the Centennial Plan. Um, so it will actually be quite easy to see inside of this area what's going on or outside of the area and, and create something that's also in line with the existing architecture. Um, in this case, this bus stop that has this undulating roof.
Okay, thank you. Uh, Commissioner Bonnar?
Um, I'm trying to find the, the, uh, cross-section and I wish you could help me. I'm trying to figure out the proximity of the reeds and the mesh, what you say is a one-inch mesh. What am I going to be seeing from the outside or the inside? Or is it the same? And you're talking now about a, a filler between the two layers?
Sure, there's, there's an actual, um, fence which is, um, created from welded wire fabric. And we see these fences often. Often they're used in a handrail. And it's generally used in an attempt to create, um, a disappearance of the handrail.
Okay, but it's more than chicken wire or...
It's substantial, yeah.
Thank you.
Yeah, the, the product is what you would find in reinforced concrete.
Okay.
Not the concrete, the mesh.
I'd, no, I'd like, I'm, I'm trying to visualize it. I'd be better off if I saw a piece of the fabric, really.
Do you have a cross-section?
Someday, and I will someday, won't I?
Thank you, Commissioner. Anybody else wish to be heard? Seeing nobody, uh, I'll entertain a motion on this matter.
Happy to do it. Item fifty-four, VAR four-nine-five-three-six, move to follow staff's recommendation for approval subject to conditions.
Please vote.
I don't get in between there.
Motion carries noting the abstention of Commissioner Slomson.
I don't hate dogs, I just think ten-foot fences are too high in the urban core.
Item fifty-five, SDR four-nine-five-three-two, again, move to follow staff's recommendation for approval subject to conditions.
Please post. Motion carries again noting the abstention of Commissioner Slomson.
Mr. Chairman, these items are final action in the absence of an appeal within ten days.
Thank you.
Thank you. Good night. We're gonna take a very short break here for a little bit. Uh, we'll be back shortly.
This is my first two-break planning commission.
And be outside and be in a safer area. Um, you know, I, I, I know they shouldn't be playing in the street, but you know, kids cross the street and when there's more traffic, you know, there's, there's a increased chance for accidents and uh injuries. So um, the other thing uh specifically I would like to oppose the, the buffer being waived. I think that buffer is a good thing to have between the high density property if it is approved and the residential areas that are on typically larger lots and less, less density. And you know, like, like he was saying, you know, that was a lot of the reason we moved to where we moved is to have some of the space and the lower, lower density. Thanks.
Thank you, sir. Ma'am?
Hi. My name is May McGinnis, uh sixty-five twenty North Tenaya. I'm representing Bill McGinnis, my father-in-law, and my husband John. Um, we're completely opposed to this. We are diagonal to the property right there on Tenaya. We own both properties that sit right in front of that lamplight uh facility of homes that have twenty houses. We weren't opposed to that, which we should have been because it has come, they, they, what we didn't realize that there was two-story homes going in. Well, that kind of blocks our view, plus it puts twenty ha- homes into the space. Well, now, we've got a hundred and two homes trying to come into this little chunk of property. If you look at your county line compared to your city line, it zigzags all around that area. So they need to, you know, realize this is a rural area. We have basically five acres there that is all horse property. We have UNLV rodeo team come practice at our place on occasions. So it's not right that they bring in a hundred and two complex into a rural area. And where's the traffic gonna go? Is there going to be an off-ramp on the two fifteen that goes right past their place? We're not even sure what's going on with the two fifteen. There's that frontage road this, that runs right along the front of that property. And I, we've been out of town, so we don't know what exactly is going on. So um, we're opposed to that. We're opposed to the three stories, 'cause it's gonna completely block our view to the mountain. We're not, it'll be like living in the city. Uh, we're opposed to the, the special land use. I'm not even sure what that is. Um, I'm opposed to the, what is the other thing called? There was several of them that you had listed on this card. There was uh the Town Center Zone, which I'm not sure what that is, but I'm opposed to it. I'm opposed to everything on this card. Because I think they're being a little greedy.
All right. Thank you, ma'am.
Thank you.
Does anybody else wish to be heard on this matter?
Can I ask one more question?
Briefly.
Uh, I, I just wasn't clear on where the private drive entrance would be. I hadn't seen the design uh prior or at all yet.
If we could have the applicant just come up and show him, Mr. Limerick. Let me show all of this, actually.
I'm not sure if you can see that on the uh, on the overhead, uh but private drive actually comes in off of Tenaya. Um, and it's the same, i- it's roughly the same location that there was previously zoned and um ev- everything was a go on this project before the, the market crash. I mean, the, the driveway's almost in the exact same position. As a matter of fact, there's existing public sewer stub there uh and public water stub there because of that. Um, so that driveway location is, has been slated to be there for a, a lot of years. This was the original Paxton Walk project, in which case there was um, it, it was okay to have four-story buildings here uh on this project. It, it's obvious that we do have the Town Center zoning in here and what we're applying for and asking for is within the realms of that current zoning that's, that's on this piece of property. Um, there were some concerns about added traffic out on the Darling side into those, those residents that live out there. There, there actually is no access from this property to the back on Darling. Darling is actually a county road, at least from halfway back to the north. Um, and all our access uh for this project would be out on Tenaya. And then uh as the project continues on up through in, in succession, that we're hoping that, to continue the success of this project and continue building on up through our, the rest of our thirty-some acres with the two master plan driveways that come in off of Centennial when we did the uh two million dollars worth of improvements on Centennial adding to this property, including all the paving, the utilities, the storm drain, the power, everything that went in for this project in here. So this is just, we're, we're trying to reinstate it back into the project to get moving on just portions of it, of what was slated to go here years ago. So.
Thank you. Anybody else wish to be heard on this matter? Saying none, I will close the public discussion portion and open it up for discussion amongst the board.
Mr. Chair, um, I, I want to thank the, the neighbors that came out. I, I think it's important that I do clarify one thing. Most of the, what I've heard in protest tonight is about the, the multifamily use. And that has already been approved. That is not an item that's in front of the Planning Commission tonight. We're really looking at two items. One is the uh, the private streets and the second one is the buffer. Um, and you know, for, for that reason, I, I want you to understand what it is that uh, that, that we are looking at in the decision that we're making tonight. Um, I was there when the applicant had the neighborhood meeting uh back in September. I appreciate the, the concessions uh that have been made. And um, I, I think you've been, you've tried to be a good neighbor here and therefore you're going to see my support.
Thank you.
With, with regard to the, the private streets and the, the buffer.
Thank you, Commissioner. Anybody else wish to be heard? Saying none, I'll entertain a motion.
Item sixty-two, SUP four-nine-one-seven-six. Move to follow staff's recommendation for approval, uh subject to the conditions.
Item sixty-three, SDR four-nine-one-seven-five. Move to follow staff's recommendation for approval with the elimination of the Scribner's Error, also known as Errant Condition Eight.
Please post. Motion carries.
Mr. Chairman, these items are final action in the absence of an appeal within ten days.
Thank you. Moving on now to item sixty-four, which is SUP four-nine-three-three-four. Applicant Sherrell Ham, or excuse me, Sherrell Hall, owner is five-four-five-zero West Sahara LLC, for possible action on a request for a special use permit for a proposed six-hundred-and-forty square-foot massage establishment with waivers to allow a zero-foot distance separation from a residentially-zoned property where four-hundred feet is required and a sixty-foot distance separation from an existing massage establishment where one-thousand feet is required at fifty-four-fifty West Sahara Avenue, Suite one-thirty-eight in Ward One, Councilwoman Tarkanian. Staff is recommending denial. And staff, may we have a report, please?
Uh, Mr. Chairman, the proposed use does not meet the minimum special use requirements for the minimum separation from residentially-zoned property or from another massage establishment. As such, staff recommends denial as the proposed use is not appropriate at this location.
Thank you. I'd like to hear from the applicant, please, if you give me your name and address.
Sherrell Hall, fifty-four-fifty West Sahara, number one-thirty-eight, Las Vegas, eight-nine-one-four-six.
I'm sorry, I didn't get your full name.
Sherrell Hall.
Sherrell Hall, thank you. Okay, go ahead.
Um, it's actually just a small, it's just me. I was doing uh massage since two thousand and six. It's not actually an establishment location. It's, well, I guess it is, but not technically. It's just one room. The complete space, I believe, is six-hundred square feet. Six-hundred square feet, but it's actually a ten-by-eight room is actually the only place that massage will be done in. Um, it's normal bit operating hours of ten to seven. We're not looking to stay open anytime late. Uh, that's pretty much it.
Thank you. I'll now open this up for public comment. Does anybody wish to be heard on this matter? Sir, if you give me your name and address, please?
My name is Tom Bath. I work at the Equity Group, which is at six-zero-one-eight South Durango. Uh, we do the leasing on the building as well as the property management, and my broker does syndication, so we have an ownership interest in the building as well. Um, like she said, I could see if this were close to another establishment, if this were a second retail center, open twenty-four hours, neon sign, they're in a professional office building. Um, they, actually, the usable space is five-hundred-and-fifty-six, I believe, rentable is six-forty. Um, they, they, they do abide by building hours and uh we've had no problems with them since March first when they moved in.
Thank you. Does anybody else wish to be heard? Saying none, I'll, seeing none, I'll close the public comment portion, open it up for discussion amongst the board. And before we do that, I'll uh entertain a question from the applicant.
Yeah, I just wanted to also note that we are not allowed to put any signs up outside, so it's not visible, as you could see from the photo that was uh previously. It's ins- inside of a building, there's no massage signs, there's no neon lights, there's no advertisement whatsoever. It's pretty much for my own personal clientele, just because for me, it's just safer to have a location as opposed to doing uh in-home service as I was previously in the few years before.
Thank you. And now open up for discussion amongst the board.
Mr. Chairman, I'm a, uh, I currently have some business dealings with the Equity Group's uh broker, and under abundance of caution, I will abstain from this item.
Thank you, Commissioner. Anybody else wish to comment on this? Saying none, I'll entertain a motion.
Mr. Chairman, let me ask you, has it, had you been operating in here prior to?
No. When we first applied for the license, they told us that, well, we got all the business license and everything, and they said, okay, this is fine. When we went down there to pay the fee for the special use permit, that's when we were told we had, we couldn't open until we got this uh special use permit. So we had all the other licensing and we moved into the location, 'cause we signed a lease prior to.
So it's just you by yourself?
Yeah, well, um, I rented space out to her too. She's another massage therapist, but.
I, I'm almost of the belief that to give you the approval, but put a, put a one-year review on it.
Yes, I definitely have no problem with that.
And um, I'd like to bring it back to public and not admin. So that would be my motion if, if no one else on item sixty-four. Subject to all staff's recommendation and condition. Have you read the conditions?
Yes.
Are you okay with them?
Yes.
Okay. Mr. Chairman, that would be my motion.
Thank you. Please post. Motion carries.
Mr. Chairman, this item will go forward to the August twenty-first City Council meeting.
Okay, thank you.
Moving on to item number sixty-five, which is SUP four-nine-three-eight-two. The applicant is Spickler Olonak LLC, owner Canyon Plaza LLC, for possible action on a request for a special use permit for a retail establishment with accessory packaged liquor, off-sale use within an existing three-thousand-and-sixty-square-foot convenience store at sixty-three-ninety West Lake Mead Boulevard, Ward Five, Councilman Barlow. Staff is recommending approval. Staff, may we have a report, please?
Uh, Mr. Chairman, the proposed use can be conducted in a harmonious and compatible manner with surrounding uses, therefore staff recommends approval.
Thank you. I'd like to hear from the applicant, if you give me your name and address, please.
My name is Jason Olonak. Business address sixty-three-ninety West Lake Mead, eight-nine-one-zero-eight. I'm, I've been in this uh convenience store for about ten years now, and it's a neighborhood store, and um a lot of my customers walk to the store, they don't have cars, so they've requested that I start carrying uh some other items, like packaged liquor. And um, I've uh, trying to accommodate them. I also, um, at nighttime, have security on premise every night, uh from nine PM to five AM to get rid of any, uh, you know, no one's hanging out front or anything like that, drinking on the premises. That's it.
Thank you. Now open this up for public comment. Does anybody wish to be heard on this matter? Saying none, I'll close the public comment portion, open it up for discussion amongst the commission.
Mr. Chairman, I have no problems with this, ride, ride by the store every day. Actually, you got probably cheapest gas in town.
Sometimes.
Yeah, as well. So I have no problem with it. Uh, move for approval, subject to all staff's recommendation.
Thank you, Commissioner. Please post. Motion for approval carries. Thank you.
Mr. Chairman, this item will go forward to the August twenty-first City Council meeting.
Going now to related items sixty-six, sixty-seven, and sixty-eight, beginning with sixty-six, SUP four-nine-five-one-nine, app. Oh, I missed that one. Obviously wasn't writing down fast enough today. Going to relate, uh, related items seventy, seventy-one, seventy-two, and seventy-three, beginning with item number seventy, which is SUP four-nine-five-four-nine, applicant Todd Kessler, owner ten-twenty-eight Fremont Street LLC, for possible action on a request for a special use permit for a proposed two-thousand-square-foot tavern, limited establishment use within one-thousand-seven-hundred-and-fifty square feet of outdoor seating area at ten-twenty-eight Fremont Street, Suite one-hundred, Ward Three, Councilman Coffin. Staff is recommending approval. SUP, uh, item number seventy-one, SUP four-nine-five-five-two, for possible action on a request for a special use permit for a proposed two-thousand-three-hundred-and-sixty square-foot tavern, limited establishment use with four-thousand-two-hundred-and-fifty square feet of outdoor seating area in Ward Three, Councilman Coffin. Staff is recommending approval. Item number seventy-two, SUP four-nine-five-five-three, for possible action on a request for a special use permit for a proposed two-thousand-six-hundred-and-twenty-five square-foot tavern, limited establishment use with four-thousand-two-hundred-and-fifty square feet of outdoor seating area at Ward Three, Councilman Coffin. Staff is recommending approval. And then item number seventy-three, which is SDR four-nine-five-four-eight, for possible action on a request for a site development plan review for the conversion of a motel into a fifty-thousand-seven-hundred-and-sixty-eight square-foot retail and tavern limited complex in Ward Three, Councilman Coffin. Staff is recommending approval. Staff, may we have a report, please?
Chairman, before we start, uh, I will be abstaining on these items as I'm under contract on other properties and projects with the owner and applicant.
Thank you.
Mr. Chairman, the applicant is proposing to convert the use of a vacant motel into three tavern limited establishments and several office and retail suites at one-thousand-twenty-eight Fremont Street. The proposed tavern limited establishment uses total seventeen-thousand-two-hundred-and-thirty-five square feet, including eight-thousand-six-hundred-and-twenty-five square feet of outdoor patio space. This project is located in the East Village District of the downtown Centennial Plan and allows tavern limited establishments with the approval of special use permits. Staff supports the adaptive re- reuse of these properties and recommends approval of the corresponding applications with conditions. Please note that additional letters of protest and support have been received after the publishing. Thank you.
Thank you. Hear from the applicant, name and address.
Yes, good evening again. Jennifer Roberts of Lionel Sawyer &amp; Collins, three-hundred South Fourth Street, appearing on behalf of the property owner. This is a series of applications relating to the conversion of Ferguson's Motel to mixed retail and office use, and this is another project extending the Las Vegas downtown development to East Fremont. And staff has recommended approval. All conditions are acceptable, and we ask that you follow staff's recommendation. Here to answer any questions.
Thank you. I'll open it up for public comment. Does anybody wish to be heard on this matter? Saying none, I'll close the public comment portion, open it up for discussion with the board. Anybody care to comment? Saying none, I'll entertain a motion.
Mr. Chairman, on item seventy, move to follow staff's recommendation for approval, subject to all conditions.
Thank you.
I had a que- question, Mr. Chairman. I want to ask Flynn, what, what's gonna happen with those signs? Do those go to the Neon Museum or do they recycle into fence, fence-to-be?
Mr. Chairman, through you, I think the applicant would need to respond to that question.
Uh, you know, I'm not sure if they're going to keep the signs, but they are of some historical value, so I guess the, you know, whether they stay on the premises, they're not really changing the exterior, other than just, you know, keeping it in, in good shape. So they may keep the sign, I'm not, I'm not sure, actually.
Tell them, try to keep them somehow, in integrity. Thank you.
Thank you. During the discussion, item seventy posted, motion carried for approval.
Item seventy-one, move to follow staff's recommendation for approval, subject to all staff's recommendations and conditions.
Please post. Motion carries, noting the abstention of, of Commissioner Slotman, and also note that he abstained on item number seventy as well.
Move for approval of item seventy-two, subject to all staff's recommendations and conditions.
Please post. Motion carries, again noting the abstention of Commissioner Slotman.
And move for approval of item seventy-three, subject to all staff's recommendations and conditions.
Thank you. Please post. Motion carries, noting the abstention of Commissioner Slotman.
Mr. Chairman, those items go forward to the August twenty-first City Council meeting.
Okay, great. Thank you. Have a good night.
Good night. We're now on the Director's Business portion of the agenda, beginning with item number seventy-four, TXT four-nine-two-two-five, applicant owner, City of Las Vegas, for discussion and possible action to amend LVMC nineteen dot one-two dot zero-seven-zero, related the nightclub use by revising requirement standards and applicability and to provide for other related matters. Uh, may we have the sta- uh, staff is recommending approval. May I have the report, please?
Uh, Mr. Chairman, the proposed uh text amendment will revise nightclub's uses uh by adding alcohol sales as a per- principal activity uh as part of the special use permit process and also requiring a special use permit in the C-two zoning, CM and M zoning districts. The addition of onsite alcohol sales as a primary activity is intended to clarify that alcohol sales are permissible component of nightclub use and differentiate it from a liquor establishment tavern, which is not focused on the entertainment aspects that are typically associated with a nightclub. Uh, in addition, the proposal also creates a non-wavable distance separation requirement that will prohibit ni- nightclubs to be located within five-hundred feet of a single-family dwelling unit. This provides a distance separation for the secondary impact nightclubs and on surrounding uses over those of other tavern uses. Uh, staff does recommend approval of this item and look forward to questions or comments that you have.
Open it up for public comment. Does anybody wish to be heard on this matter? Saying none, I'll close the public comment portion, open it up for discussion amongst the board.
Yes, uh, Chair, through you, and a question for Mr. Rankin. What exactly classifies as a nightclub? What kind of business activities do you have to be involved with?
Uh, that would be entertainment, DJs, dancing. Uh, we take the standpoint in planning that most uh, most citizens and planners can tell the difference between a nightclub and a sports tavern. Uh, I think it's pretty clear what the differences are, uh, but it would be constituted, we already have a nightclub use. It doesn't envision that there would be alcohol. Uh, from the, our experience, there, we have no, have never had a request for a nightclub without alcohol, ever. And nor would we contemplate such a creature occurring. But if you wanted to do one, we'd be happy to get you a special use permit before this body.
And, and is it a particular number of nights that you have a live music or DJs that would qualify and classify you as a nightclub?
Uh, Title nineteen uh indicates that uh things that are accessory to a customer and customary to a principal use. For instance, a tavern having karaoke on Saturday night is a customary uh use for a tavern. Uh, for a tavern to have a DJ, a live DJ dancing eight, or the, five nights a week would be a nightclub. So it is, it is a subjective call in that matter, but uh, as professional planners, we think we can tell the difference between a nightclub and a sports bar.
Thank you. Any more comments? Saying none, I'll entertain a motion.
Yes, uh, Chairman, on item number seventy-four, Bance, TXT four-nine-two-two-five, would make a motion, follow staff's recommendation for approval.
Thank you, Commissioner. Please post. Motion carries.
Mr. Chairman, this item will go forward to City Council in ordinance form.
Thank you. Item number seventy-five, DIR four-nine-three-seven-eight, applicant owner, City of Las Vegas, for discussion and possible action on a presentation of the annual report on the Las Vegas twenty-twenty Master Plan. Staff has no recommendation, and may we have the report, please?
Uh, Mr. Chairman, uh, NRS uh requires that the Planning Commission review the Master Plan annually. This is your annual review and report. Uh, the Master Plan is intended to provide a broad citywide uh policy and direction through the year twenty-twenty. Uh, currently, NRS, uh, previously, I should say, NRS required nineteen uh specific policy plans to be addressed within the Master Plan, and the city is in conformance with all nineteen of the previous plans. Uh, recently, SB fifty-five was adopted by the state, which reduced the number of Master Plan elements from nineteen to eight, thereby consolidating all of the nineteen into eight The consolidation of the elements will occur part, as part of the continuing update schedule so that we can move from nineteen elements down to eight. But all, all components of those elements are still incorporated within those eight items. Uh, during the course of last year, we did update two elements. The Transportation and Recreation Trail elements were completed in two thousand and thirteen, as was the Housing element. Uh, currently underway, the Parks element is uh expected to be completed by the end of twenty thirteen of this year. Uh, we had a few major complemention, uh accomplishments that furthered the goals, objectives, and policies of the uh twenty-twenty Master Plan, the opening of the Discovery Children's Museum, like the completion of the West Las Vegas Walkable Community Plan, uh, the new code regulations uh facilitating the location of mobile food vendors and open-air vending, which uh is one of the policies uh that, that is in the Master Plan, and also the completion of the new City Hall, the MLK Health Center, and the Center Las Vegas. Uh, the Master Plan policy document progress, uh, we are at ninety-nine percent complete of the policy document. Uh, we've completed one-hundred-and-eighty-nine goals, objectives, and policies. Two are not completed at this time, uh, and uh, those two items being related to planning undeveloped BLM property, and those have not been addressed. Uh, in regards to the Master Plan element progress, uh, ninety-two percent of the Master Plan elements are complete, uh, three-hundred-and-ninety-two goals, objectives, and policies. Sixty-eight are complete, thirty-one are not complete, and two-hundred-and-ninety-three are ongoing uh items. Uh, the future for twenty-twenty, uh- The future for 2020, Southern Nevada Strong is an outreach program being conducted by the Southern Nevada Regional Planning Coalition to establish a sustainability plan for the valley. All the entities are participating within that. It was made possible through a grant through HUD and the City of Las Vegas is hoping to use that as a foundation for a new master plan. We do need to look to budget for public input and document creation for our new plan as our current 2020 master plan is starting to end its time. It's time for a new plan. If there's any questions or comments, I'll be happy to take those at this time.
Thank you. Opening this matter up for public comment. Does anybody wish to be heard on this matter? Saying none, I'll close the public comment portion, open it up for discussion between the members of the board. Anybody have any comments or questions? Saying none, I'll enter, there is no action on this. Moving on to item seventy-six, which is TXT 49526, applicant owner, City of Las Vegas, for discussion and possible action to amend Section 4B of the Town Center Development Standards to add firearms to the items permitted for resale as part of the second-hand dealer use. Staff is recommending approval. And staff, may we have a report, please?
Mr. Chairman, this amendment expands the standards slightly to make allowances for second-hand firearms to be sold on both a consignment and non-consignment basis within the Town Center Master Plan area. Sale of firearms as a component of a second-hand dealer is a standard part of the business activity as permitted under Title VI and the Unified Development Code. As such, staff finds that this is an acceptable addition to the second-hand dealer uses within Town Center. And I'm happy to answer any questions.
Thank you. I'll open this up for public discussion. Does anybody wish to be heard on this matter? Saying none, I'll close the public discussion portion and open it up for discussion amongst the board.
Mr. Chairman, I'm going to abstain on this item because I am involved in a business that deals with the sale of guns.
Thank you. Commissioner Truesdale, anybody else wish to be heard? Saying no one, I'll entertain a motion.
Motion, sorry, item seventy-six, TXT 49526, the motion is to follow staff's recommendation for approval.
Please post. Motion carries, noting the abstention of Commissioner Truesdale.
Mr. Chairman, on item seventy-five, we didn't take an action, but it, it just said it was no recommendation. Was there a looking for action?
No.
Technically, it is a report to the Planning Commission. No action is actually necessary. Mr. Chairman, on item seventy-six, that item will go forward to city council in ordinance form.
Thank you. The last portion of the agenda is citizens' participation. Item number seventy-seven, citizens' participation, public comment during this portion of the agenda must be limited to matters within the jurisdiction of the Planning Commission. No subject may be acted upon by the Planning Commission unless that subject is on the agenda and is scheduled for action. If you wish to be heard, come to the podium and give your name for the record. The amount of discussion on any single subject, as well as the amount of time any single speaker is allowed, may be limited. Seeing none, item seventy-seven is, will close the citizens' participation portion and, does anybody else have any comments?
Yes, Chair, one last thing. I know we can't take action on this, but maybe Flynn can if he runs into a maintenance guy at some point. If we can get the aerator changed out on the men's restroom faucet, it keeps throwing water on us every time we go back there, so I'm sure you'll get a couple of pats on the back from your fellow council people as well.
Thank you, Commissioner. At this juncture, meeting adjourned.